Good evening and welcome to the Stoughton Select Board meeting of August 17th, 2021. And there is, I just want to make one announcement to our meeting. If somebody at home watching TV is having a hard time logging in, please refer to the town website. There was an updated meeting notice put there. So if you're having a problem logging in and you're watching the meeting on television, just log onto the town website and copy the new address for the Google meets login. So with that, I will open this meeting of the Stoughton Select Board of August 17th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting.
Motion made and seconded.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, so it's unanimous. So with that, I would ask that you please join me if you're able in standing for saluting our flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I could ask you to remain standing. And I would just ask that we take a moment to remember the mother of our recreation department, Director Matt Cauchon. Many will know Matt has come on board in the last few years and young guy doing a great job for the recreation department for the youth of our town. And on behalf of the members of the Board of Selectmen, grandmother, I'm sorry, grandmother, and that we extend our sincere and deepest condolences to the grandmother of Matt and his family. Okay, and I just, I will ask the board members as well, as we continue to get closer to perfection on our audio, I don't see anybody logged in now, which is, I guess, not a good sign. I only see our picture there. Do we have, okay, so can we see those, will we be able to see those pictures of those folks?
No, they have their background different.
Okay, okay, all right, so, okay, so we're there, and I would say, is there anybody if you would like to unmute yourself and see if we can hear you before we move forward? Okay, I guess. Fran, can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can. How's the audio? Is it good?
It's not bad.
Okay. Not bad, acceptable, I guess.
Acceptable.
We're still, okay, all right, thank you, Fran. Okay.
Can you hear me, Dolores?
Hi, Dolores, you look like you're in Disneyland there.
Good evening.
Can you hear us okay?
I can, thank you.
Beautiful, okay, great. All right. Mark, it looks like we're getting there. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, first part of our meeting is citizens' request, and I'll take this opportunity to ask if anybody in the public would like to be heard under citizens' request. Seeing nobody in the hall, is there anybody at home that would like to be heard under citizens' requests? Okay, so with that, we will move to select board comments, and I will stop from my left, Mr. Gito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I'd like to give a shout out to my colleague to my immediate right for doing something that was very transparent. A couple of weeks ago, she invited the assessors to our meeting, and they gave us a heads-up on the change in value in property, both residential and commercial, and what the implications were for what our taxes might be for next year. And I think that that's, that was a very good thing. And she's also sent around a request for scheduling for what we need to do for next year. And I think that that is also very important. Some things that are perhaps not so transparent, and I think that relate to what we're doing now and what we're going to have to do over the next several months. One of them, I've been sending a letter to the Board of Selectmen for the last three years, asking for a three-year plan and a three-year capital plan and budget. And we do not have that. That would have allowed us to have a sense of how we were going to pay for the fire station, how we were going to pay for the school, which is going to come up in the next couple of years. And I think that not having that isn't making our job easier. We also heard at the annual town meeting that our infrastructure may be crumbling a little bit. A lot of it is 60 years old, a lot of the subdivisions we have in town. And we need to have a plan for how to make sure that we don't get in the same situation with our infrastructure as we have with our police station or the fire station for the last 10 years. And we need to plan for dealing with those issues in a timely manner. To not do that is just going to kick the can down the road and make it harder for the taxpayers in the long run. So there's a lot of work that we need to do.
Mr. Chairman?
I say that because we have some decisions that we have to make as a community over the next couple of years. We need, we need, let me say again, we need a fire station. And we need to understand that it's going to cost money for that, but we need it. The same thing is true for the schools. But we need to have information available to every member of the community as to what our costs are, how we're planning to do business, and how they may have to participate in that process. And if we don't talk with them in very clear terms, in very adult terms, and not try to hide the ball, not that I'm saying that anybody's trying to do that, but there's always that thought. If we don't make things clear and make them transparent, then it's not going to be easy I ran for this office on the basis of being transparent and having adult conversations. And we need to do that. I've been on the board for four weeks, four meetings, and I'm on to another topic now. We had competition for some of the vacancies on boards and committees. In others, we've had only one applicant. We've got 28,000 people in this town, many of them very, very talented and able to do things. We have to all participate and get involved. We can't sit and wait until next June, May, or whatever time when we put advertisements out for those positions. You who are sitting there at home, listening, need to get involved. There are times when you can't do that. You've got young kids, you've got a new job, you've got something going for you that you can't spend the time. But we're darn lucky to be in this country, able to have a government that can be responsive to us. Come on, be part of it. And I guess my last thing is I just, this past week, or past meeting, Mr. Cavey was kind enough to show me how to get into the shared files. Now, if I had known that earlier on, I would have made this comment earlier, but I didn't know it until after the last meeting. And that is that we, as a board, have got to review the town manager's performance by the 15th of September. I've heard not a whit about that. And I think it's important that, we all know, I mean, I didn't deal with the town manager the last, the last year, but I certainly have seen what is and isn't on my plate now. So I don't know when we're going to deal with that, but it's got to be dealt with soon. That's the end of my comments.
If I might respond, Chairman McCrisky?
Yeah.
First of all, the last comment and your first comments dovetail together.
I'm sorry.
The last part, the last comment and your first comments dovetail, because on my performance goals was to present three- to five-year plans for both the budget and a capital. So that may be why you haven't heard anything about that yet, because that was a performance goal, and that you would have had no way of knowing. That was a performance goal that was set in April for the September review. We have done three-year budget projections. Sue Herman has actually produced them, and my three-year plan will be based on Sue Herman's projections, taking into account, of course, that COVID, for example, makes three-year budgeting, five-year budgeting, a little bit challenging because of unknowns. But we will look at some general capital plans at that point as part of the performance that I'm supposed to have ready for the 15th, and some three-year budget projections. But yes, my performance evaluation is on the 15th, that has not changed. As far as I know, it has to be done by the 15th. We have a meeting on September 7th. I don't know when the board plans to take it up. But that is on the table, and a preparation of a three-year budget plan, a three-year capital debt modeling, as well as, I believe, human resources, job descriptions, performance evaluation plans, which are ready to go, and a host of, I think, a few other things. But I'm eager to have you evaluate me, so we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief response. My comment was not directed at you.
Absolutely. Mr. Gito, no offense taken, you wouldn't have known that that had been set up. It was prior to your tenure on the board.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gito, just to respond, and I think I did show you briefly the shared drives at one of the meetings when we talked about the things we've been working on. And I just don't want people to be misled on the transparency statement. We have been more than transparent on this board in the short time this board has been together. When the chairmanship changed, we've got a lot of things moving here, and it took a lot of work to get those things going. It wasn't something that was out there. There was a lot of things happened in the past that hurt those issues, and we were able to get both the fire station and Malcolm Parsons' property started. So we have been working. I'm very well aware of the town manager's review. There's some documents we're trying to put together so the board can have to use in their evaluation, something that's fair, and it's something that's not been utilized in the town before. The three-year plan, that is not something that's new to this board, and it goes back to, Mr. Gito, when we served together years ago, that we didn't have those plans as well. So this is not something new, but I share 100% your thoughts, you know, that we have those, because we have to have a different way of doing things now. I mean, we don't know where the money's coming from. Budgets are tighter and tighter, our needs are greater and greater, you know, and to your credit, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Infrastructure is a killer, because we didn't do things right years ago. And it wasn't of somebody's inaction or somebody's politics, it was just that the boards as a whole didn't make that a priority. So there's enough share, you know, blame to share, if we're going to call it that, that goes back quite a while. So it's still that that is needed. We are looking at doing some different things. The Finance Committee is going to come up with some plans to engage, you know, even our Bond Council on some of the things we're doing. Mr. Laurie's, you know, thought on, you know, two and a half, and, you know, in doing something different in that area, how we address the budget. So we are moving. These things that are out there now are the things that, it's the low-hanging fruit, if we want to call it that. It's things that we can act on, and we are making some progress. So any thoughts that you want to have on that budget, on that three-year plan? I mean, Ms. Roberts has been appointed to be the liaison between the Finance Committee, and I know that she's talked about that as well. And just like you said, I mean, the board as well, we can use some help working as a team in some areas. So if you'd like to help Ms. Roberts on that and give her your thoughts, I mean, you've been here and you've been on the Finance Committee, you've been on the Board of Selectmen, whatever we can get this, you know, to get the board going, you know, the more the merrier. All right, so with that... Ms. Roberts? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, can everyone hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Gito, for those nice words that you said.
You're doing a good job, thank you.
Thank you very much. So going to the next thing, as liaison to the CPC, I attended their August 4th meeting, and the CPC is looking for eligible projects for fiscal year 2022 that fall under the categories of open space, recreation, community housing, and/or historic preservation. They are open and want to work with the Select Board. They have approximately $6 million as a bank balance, and you know that balance is going to continue to grow. So they mentioned that they hadn't heard about a property 24 acres off of Kennedy Court, so they wanted to just hear one way or the other what the board decided. So I know we don't have to make a comment or decision about that right now, but maybe at their upcoming meeting, I would have some backup information to share with them. And that's, I think that's September 4th is their next meeting. Next, as liaison to FinCom, I plan to attend this Thursday's meeting, August 19th. And during that meeting, Cinder McNerney, who is the investment advisor at Hilltop Securities, she's going to be a guest speaker, and she's going to be talking about our debt service policy. So I'm working with FinCom to review our current debt policy, and that has an addition date of October 17th, 2017. So we're looking to see if there's a need to make some changes. I, the debt, this is the internal debt policy, this is the percent of the operating budget, just to be clear what we're talking about, not the external debt policy amount. So that's the internal debt policy amount. And what I find out from Cinder McNerney, I'll bring that back to the board. The issue, specific issue I'm looking for is if we increase our percentage of, for debt service, that's our internal debt service, will that improve our borrowing power? So that's one of the things I'm keen on listening for, because I do want to see us present as a petition article at our upcoming board meeting, upcoming town meeting, how we are going to fund the fire station. And hopefully, we present them with two options, outside of the budget and then inside the budget. Can we afford that? I'm really listening to hear what Ms. McNerney has to say about that. And that's all I have to say for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Mr. Cavey?
So I just have a couple of comments. First of all, the census information is immediately available to the states as of the 12th of August. I'm still trying to decipher it myself, so I haven't quite gotten to the point where I can actually provide information about what the result is for Stoughton. That, though, there's like an old format that they're still using, they're going to be providing more user-friendly, in their words, data on September 30th. So I think generally people will have an opportunity to look at the decennial, the decennial census information. Next, I was out of town this week, last week, and missed all of the work on Malcolm and Parsons, and came back to, you know, just like a couple, like a little bit of rubble, but not a whole lot. Really impressed with the work that the town staff has done to get us here, and I would just like to congratulate them, also the developer, for starting work. I know that this is something that he has also struggled with, and so I'm glad that we're in a good place now, moving towards a revitalized town center with developers and businesses doing what they do best, and hopefully we can, we can help them however we're able. The last item I just want to bring up, and I kind of remember, one of the lessons, one of the lessons my father taught me growing up was that you don't have to have an opinion on everything. It's okay not to have an opinion on everything. And that has changed the way I think about things, and even though I'm not going to pretend to know what to think about our, the United States withdrawal from Afghanistan, and whether or not this was right or wrong, or it's a better way to do it or a worse way, I don't know, or who's to blame, what I do know is that there are a lot of Americans who lost their lives in this conflict, in this war, and these are, you know, our brothers and sisters, mothers and fathers, sons and daughters, and we'll never get them back, and that loss is permanent. So more than anything, I just want to acknowledge the fact that that was a tremendous sacrifice, and that I hope that it was not in vain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavey. Mr. Carrera? Mr. Carrera has nothing. Okay. So with that, Madam Town Manager?
Yes, a couple of things. I'd like to echo Selectmen Cavey's comments about Malcolm Parsons. It really was an extraordinarily exciting week last week here in Stoughton to see that happen. I want to thank the Select Board for their support as we've gone through some challenging and sticky times with this project. Some of you have been on it through several iterations, some have been on the board and off the board and back on the board through the process. It has been a heavy lift, but it's been tremendous. The developer has stepped up. I will say, he actually was in contact throughout the demolition with the neighbor that rents the house literally right behind it, and actually made sure that their children and pets were safe through the demolition and worked very closely. So they've been a very good partner through this process, and I really want to thank our town staff, my Development Services team under Mark Tisdale, and that includes the building official, that includes our engineers, our planner, the whole team, and the Police Department. Deputy Chief Brian Holmes worked with Sergeant O'Connor very closely to make sure that we could do this and that we could do it in a way that the developer wasn't spending, you know, exorbitant amounts of money for police details on a project that was going to be brought inward and not outward into the streets, and so all sorts of logistics were addressed. And I just want to pass along a huge thank you to the team for that. We also just, I will give a formal update and report. I have Dana, our new code enforcement officer, putting together for me a little Excel spreadsheet of what he's been working on, and I will get ready to present that to the board. One of the charges the board gave me over the past year and a half or so was to work toward better code enforcement and enhancement. We've established a little code enforcement division, if you will, and that is Dale, who's been hired as the code enforcement officer, he's the primary, and Sean Leahy splits his position between Board of Health and Assistant to Dana in code enforcement. Sean does a lot of the paperwork and backup and follow-up. Dana does a lot of the on-the-street work. He literally is out and about, working on everything from getting illegal signs that are stuck in the ground to places where we've had habitual offenders of, you know, making neighborhoods look frankly uninhabitable and unpleasant. And I will say, he has not made friends in some cases, and that's good. That means he's doing his job if he's not making a load of friends. So we want, we want to be fair, though, and I think, you know, we will be fair in compromising with people and giving them time to rectify situations. But what we are hoping for is generally a cleanup. It's just not fair when we don't enforce those rules, and it's not fair to people who pay taxes and work hard, and they should live in neighborhoods that reflect that. And so we're very excited about that, and I will provide some type of a written update on what he's been working on, his primary areas, some repeat offenders that we've run into, and down the road, what we would like to do to handle it. Do we want an internal sort of municipal-type court to handle it? Because what we don't have right now is a lot of teeth. We can send letters, we can say we're going to fine, but we don't have a lot of teeth, and it's not something that, once it goes into a larger court system, really gets done. So we will work on that, on an enforcement and a way to actually follow up on this, because it's important, and I am excited about the work that's being done. I also want to mention, during our staff meeting, Jack Erickson, our building official, indicated to me that they cannot keep up on permitting. We have a lot of activity going on in town, large permits, small permits. It's very exciting. It's a sign of people willing to invest in their community, in their homes, in their businesses. As they said, some are large-scale and some are smaller. He described his office to me right now, the permits, as the episode, he described this today, as the episode of "I Love Lucy" where the chocolates just keep coming along, and he said, "We feel like we're just shoving these all in our mouth, that they're coming at us so fast, the requests." So that is a great thing, and we were very conservative, you know, somewhat conservative in estimating our revenues on those. Hopefully, we will meet and exceed those revenues on that. I would also like to announce on a positive note, Paula Newt has indicated that our collection rates are back up a couple percentage points from last year, which last year obviously was a little bit off in this time of year because of COVID. We're back up, we're back up to about where we were pre-COVID in our standard amounts for our collections. So things are, things are going relatively well, and we're pleased about that. Town meeting is tentatively scheduled for the 15th. I've put a notice out to Mr. Mullen that gives Bill Rowe time to do what he needs to do with the budget, but it also gives us enough time to have, because we're running on time quickly, we have to close the warrant by October 4th. Right now, I'm looking at approximately, I think we have about six or seven articles. We'd like to keep it that way. Again, you know, these are things that have to get done now, and if we wait till spring, we may miss some opportunities, but we want to keep those limited. And then, I think that might be it for me, hold on. Oh, Paula Newt wanted me to announce that all water sewer and trash customers, quarter-one trash bills will be mailed on the 17th today. The bill is due September 16th. The postmark date is not acceptable. Payment has to be received. Also, first-quarter real estate property taxes would do August 2nd. Unpaid first-quarter real estate and personal property tax bills will accrue interest. Ms. Newt also wanted me to say that she's going to put out, they call it a warrant, and she doesn't want the public to be intimidated by that word, it's just a reminder of people who have past taxes due. She is going to send a reminder letter to them as a courtesy. It's called a warrant, a demand warrant, which has such a heavy name to it, but we will be doing a mailing just to remind people who have not paid before it gets too deep for them, that they are delinquent. So she asked me to mention that as well. And that is it for me.
Okay. Did you have something?
Yeah. Are we going to discuss the date that we would like for the town meeting, or are we just being told when it's going to be? Are we going to talk about that as a board, or?
Well, it was out there, and we've talked about it, and it's been on the agenda. We didn't talk about it in any great detail, so if you've got something different...
What agenda was it on?
I believe we spoke about it briefly when you said that you were talking about special town meeting. It was at the last meeting?
No, no, that was a comment I made.
Okay, what would you like to talk about? Talk, you asked, and I said, yes.
You're going to just open the warrant, and then we're just going to close the warrant. Nobody's going to figure out where anybody's going to be in this November 15th thing. That's like the week before... That's like the week before Thanksgiving, and we're going to just rush, jam, meet, do things, and is there going to be a lot of people around? Are we going to be shut down? What's the story?
Okay.
This is, I would like to be brought in and not be told this is the date, because I gotta...
This isn't the secret society. It was done with nothing...
Nobody's talking about a secret society. I'm asking a question, and I want to finish what I have to say. Then you can shut me up and tell me that I don't have a right to talk.
There you go, Scott. There we go. That's what I was talking about before.
Yeah, and this is what I'm talking about now.
Yep, okay.
Because we didn't talk about that. Nobody said we were going to pick a day to talk about opening the warrant or what day it was going to be on or anything like that.
All right. Madam Town Manager, would you like to elaborate a little bit about the process?
With all due respect...
And then, is there an availability of what's, of kicking it down? Let's kick it, let's talk about kicking it forward, though. Let's cover all the bases right now and get it all out on the table and addressed.
With all due respect, the town moderator actually determines the date of the meeting. The board doesn't, and I don't. I've emailed the town moderator and indicated that this is a date that working with the town accountant would work. The most critical person in all of this is the town accountant, because there are budgeting things that have to be done by November 30th that he has got to get up to the state. So critical in all of this for us is that he has time. If we did it any sooner, we would have articles that may not be thoroughly vetted. FinCom has made it clear, and the board has made it clear that they don't want placeholders. So in order to have these things done in time, whether it's the fire station, whether it's downtown rezoning, or whether it's a TIF agreement for a multimillion-dollar project in town, they take some time, and I can't have a warrant with placeholders right now. So I'm under the gun a little bit for time.
This is what I'm trying to say, is that we're picking that date, we're rushing to see if things got to meet. The housing wants to meet with us and talk about what, we got to look at what they're proposing, that group. What's wrong with the week of, the first week in December or something?
We can't make the budget things that Bill needs to for the state. We have to have it in time for November 30th for Bill Rowe to make the adjustments he needs to.
What if we didn't have a special town meeting at all? Would Bill still make the...
We would need the special town meeting for the adjustments. I mean, we could do two. We could do a budget one in November and another town meeting in December. We pushed it back to December one year when we had a snowstorm and we actually had to postpone, but we didn't have some budget adjustments, and Bill had less concerns that year. I have no problem kicking it with more time. I just don't think that if we move back a week, we hit Thanksgiving. And that was the concern. Mr. Mullen wanted to make sure that we were done in time for Thanksgiving week. But, you know, I could talk to Bill and see if there's something he can do to dance around that November 30th timeline and back it up into December, but I have to tell you, when we did move it into December, a lot of people were not happy because we were bucking the holiday season there, and that became a challenge. As far as virtual live, at this point, we have no restrictions on it being live, but that again is the moderator's call. None of that is my call.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gito.
We're going to have a hearing on the rezoning of the downtown on the 13th of September. We're supposed to be able to take comments at that time and incorporate those into a zoning article. That's going to happen in two weeks? I mean, you know, in all due respect, it seems to me that we should think a little bit about some of the things that are going to make major changes in the town, sufficiently that people can feel comfortable with knowing what's going on, feeling that they've been heard. I mean, to have a public hearing and basically two weeks later, maybe three, close the warrant, doesn't seem to me to give people very much time to deal with some very important issues. I mean, I knew nothing about the fact that we had to have a meeting before the beginning of December in order to resolve some financial issues in the town. Seems to me somewhere in one of those little things that I was able to look at, maybe I would have found that out. Maybe I needed a briefing. I don't know what I needed, but I feel kind of stupid not knowing that. I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying, you know, how I feel about knowing for the first time, sitting here, that we have to have a meeting in the middle of, early in, or the end of December, I mean, November, in order to be able to run the town for the rest of the year. That's what I think that I heard.
It's to comply with the state reporting on the recap. Bill has deadlines, and frankly, I wanted to do the meeting, Bill wanted me to do the meeting in October, and when I pushed it out to November 15th, he was hanging on a limb with me on it. So...
Is there any way for him to get relief from that?
I don't believe so. I mean, if we use only local receipts to balance the budget, then we wouldn't need that, but we use more than that for our budget, and it has to do with state funding that isn't reconciled by the time we have our regular town meeting. So there are logistic reasons for it. It's not ideal. I'd love more time, but, you know, I'm bound by certain deadlines.
My bad, I guess.
No, it's just a logistic thing. I mean, as I said, one year we were able to push it into December. I'm not sure logistically why Bill was able to that year. I just know that he indicated to me this year with some of the balancing that has to happen, he needs to have us done by mid-November so he can reconcile.
Why don't we ask him?
I'll have him write something to the board.
To look, to find out, is there anything that can be done to give us more time? And I think a couple of board members, when we started talking about this, did question the shortness of the meeting, and to your point, we did mention as well that, you know, the moderator would set that date, and the moderator can change it. And as a matter of fact, I heard somebody say that today, that there's a possibility the moderator may look to change the date. So that's his prerogative. You know, we call it, and then it's beyond our hands. You know, we made the decision, from what I recall, based on information from the auditor. There was a timeline issue, and so if there's something we can do to kick that out a little bit, it would probably be a better idea to try to get that done now.
The reality is, yeah, there are ways to do it, but they're not fiscally prudent budget practices. We have ARPA money. We don't want to use ARPA money to balance our budget with a one-shot revenue of ARPA money to balance an operating budget. We need to be sure that we're using all of our funding properly, and if we can't use that state aid the way we'd like to, and we can't report and recap the way we need to, we're going to be backed into doing sort of fiscally imprudent budget practices, and that's the concern.
And it's beyond our control at this point. It's between the moderator, and if Mr. Rowe can't convince the moderator, it seems like the moderator's going to have to make a decision. And all we do is call the town meeting, what we need, and then the moderator can take it. So it's, I would guess that the moderator, if he can talk with the auditor, and he feels comfortable, or he doesn't feel comfortable, that's what's going to happen. That's his ballgame. It's not ours.
And I can tell you, the timelines are rough and very quick. I mean, I would have loved another three weeks, frankly. With the types of projects that we have going on, these are large-scale discussions. These aren't short, easy things. A zoning project, a tax incentive, they're big-ticket items. So that's why we want to limit it to five or six articles only, if we can. I don't want to expand it out beyond what we really don't need to.
Mr. Carrara?
We're exactly at the spot that I was hoping we were going to get to, what we absolutely need this thing for. I was on the board nine years. We didn't throw out special town meetings every year. We didn't have them twice a year. We needed them when we needed them, and it was something that was tragic, unforeseen, or something like that. Budgetary process, we had to do something when things were wicked tight, and we had to ask people to take no raises, because we needed that money to balance the budget. But these fall town meetings, and that's what I'm going to call them, because they're no longer specials. They're just fall town meetings that were just hurry up, get these things on the warrant, because we can't wait to the annual town meeting, because nobody can wait. We just got a go-go-go gadget. And that's what I see this as. You show me the priority, the important things that have to go on this, and I might feel a little more comfortable about it. But if we're going to just have dual town meetings every year, let's stand up and tell the people in this town what we're doing. We're spending money.
Mr. Carrara, for example, the TIF is something that brings in money.
I don't even want to hear about the TIF, because...
Okay, you know what?
I really don't.
If you want an answer as to why things are important, I'm trying to give it to you, sir.
That's something I'll talk about later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was my impression, hopefully everyone can hear me, it was my impression that we have to lock in the tax rate in November. That's the reason that we have to have a special town meeting, town meeting, and it has to be 42 days from the date that we advertised.
From the close of the warrant.
From the close of the warrant.
Yes.
Yes, so, yeah, it's that November date, and I'm glad we brought it up tonight, because I was going to talk to the board about new growth. So new growth is an element of our levy, and I just wanted to have a litmus test. Since we really don't know about new growth, and we don't have to make a final decision until January, can we just exclude that, put it aside, don't count it into the budget at this time until we know exactly what it is? Now, in the past couple of years, it's been around $800,000, and when we start, when we get to the budget process and we meet with FinCom, then it looks like it's always around $200,000 and $400,000 that we're raveling with, and that's because early on, we are including around $800,000 of new growth, but we really don't know if that's the number. So I was just going to throw that out there for a discussion point, to hold that aside, not include it in the budget right now when we start discussing it, because we really don't have a clear number on what the new growth dollar amounts are. So I'm glad this came up, so maybe we can put it on the agenda for a near-future date. The impact of doing it, this is new growth, or not doing it, included in the budget for right now, until we know for sure what that dollar amount is. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on that.
If need be, we can always have a special meeting as well, you know, on an off-night, and to discuss it further. There are, the TIF is important. Maybe not everybody agrees with it. It is important. There's an article that's out there that was actually started in 2015, which results in a piece of town-owned land bringing back revenue to the town for development, and it's taken that long to get it ready. And I guess it just comes down to a personal opinion as to what a special town meeting is. There's no definition of what the special town meeting is. It basically, it's the selectman's prerogative to call a special town meeting, and it can be for any purpose. It doesn't say that it has to be. Now, this goes back to, and same person you probably know and I know, said the same thing to you when he mentioned Bill Kelly. Bill Kelly is the one that said when he was moderator, there better be a damn good reason for it. That's a moderator's prerogative. It's not our prerogative, and we have to do what is in the best interest of the residents in moving the town forward, whether it's meeting a deadline like this, or whether it's supporting a TIF to bring a business in, or whether it's getting a plan done. So we have that prerogative to call a special town meeting for that. If the moderator chooses to say that that's not, and he's not going to call it, that's his prerogative, you know, and I don't think that's a way for us to move the town forward. We're always going to have differences of opinion, but, you know, I think moving forward with it, if it can't be done, then it can't be done. But then we're going to have to deal with, you know, what happens if we have a problem with the auditor's office, so the town accountant. So I don't know where we go from here. If you want to have another meeting and wait to hear back from Bill, we can have another meeting Tuesday night, come in for this one issue, and see what we can do to button things up, get the moderator's input, and kind of get a better lay of the land. I don't know. Is that Bill? Okay, good. Bill, can you hear me?
This is Bob Mullen.
Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Moderator, go ahead.
Yes, good evening to everybody. Just want to clarify, it's the Select Board that calls a special town meeting.
Right. That's what I said. We call it, you set the dates.
No, 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 no. You set the date. I can change the date under the special rules under the governors during the COVID-19 situation.
Okay.
I stand corrected. I thought it was moderator's.
And that's what I thought it was all the time as well.
But the Select Board calls, you know, you select a date. You call the special town meeting any time, according to C-7-1 in the Charter. Can you hear me okay, Joe?
Yeah, I heard you. Thank you, Bob. Well, Robin, what do you want to do?
Well, I just know from Bill Rowe that he needs by December 1st to recap.
Okay. Let's get a clarification from Bill.
I can get an email to the board to clarify, because he's been very clear.
And if we have to, we'll post another meeting.
I just texted Sue Herman, actually, to confirm.
If we have to, we'll post another meeting. We'll come back and talk with Bill, and he can state his case why he has to have it. That's all.
I mean, he was a little uncomfortable with me when I moved it from October forward, because I said I can't possibly get all of this done.
Okay. All right. Let's get that clarification then, and... Okay, all right. Okay, is everybody okay? Okay, Scott, you okay with that?
And I do. I stand corrected on the moderator selecting the date for the special.
Yeah, and that's what I thought it was. All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, on that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullen, that's why I've been sending you those emails.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, before we move on, may I ask, make one additional comment?
Sure.
I apologize for this. I literally just found it, but I was able to find the census information for our town from US census.gov. In April 1st of 2010, so this was our last census, we had 26,962 people, and the census as of April 1st, 2020, is 29,281 people, and that is an increase of 8.6 percent. So we are almost at, almost a 10% gain in 10 years. It looks like, we could talk more about this another time, but just to give you a high level, given the national trends, we have a smaller increase of people under 5, a smaller increase of people under 18, and a larger increase of people over 65. We are an aging community.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
What I just wanted, I would like to back up a minute. I didn't get, I was thinking of four different things at the time after the Select Board's comments, and I just wanted to reiterate on some of the great things that we've had happen. One that was probably, you know, not visible to a lot of people, but we as well, about two weeks ago, had another movie shot in Stoughton, and I had the opportunity to speak with the lead person for the scouting of locations for these different movies. This one here had Halle Berry in Stoughton, and they did a couple sites in town, and when talking to the scout, it was nice to hear that it's a very nice town to film in. There's a lot of resources. I had the opportunity to talk to him about a couple other sites that he didn't know about, and he's planning on coming back out. He's out in this area quite often, and any time that we can get that, you know, and get the notoriety for the town puts us on the map, and there are people out there, and I'm probably a little closer to some of them than I would need to be.
them than I would need to be, but there are these movie buffs that go out in the area and just look at these sites when movies are filmed. You know, there were people just recently that, if it hasn't happened, Madam Town Manager, the bus trip at the train station, all right, there's a bus trip coming for people that were fans of the movie Little Women.
Little Women, yeah.
And the post, the train station is going to be opened up so they can see the interior, which they will see that it looks nothing like it did in the movie.
But we are going to work with Historic District to make it look...
Right, well, I'll tell you, I've been in that...
Make it work, the bus trip.
I, like a lot of people in this room, have been inside that building, I don't know how many times, and I'll tell you, I had a hard time figuring out that it was our train station with what they did to the inside of that building. Maybe they liked the shape of the windows, because you could make that out, so, but it was supposed to be made to look like Concord as well, and there was actually a sign. So, it's funny, when they make these movies, they pick these places and they make it to look like something else when they could have just gone there, but hey, who knows? That's why I'm not doing movies. But, so, it's one more thing that puts us on the map, it's really a good thing, so, I just want to make sure that folks knew that that was going on. We got a lot of calls from different people on what was all the trailers down at the Hanson School a few weeks back.
Facebook blew up.
Yeah, and that's what it was, you know? Some people thought it was a carnival, they wanted to know what the hours of the carnival were, because they saw the big tent going up and all the trailers. But, so that was a great day, so. All right then, so, moving forward, we are all set on that, so, Madam Town Manager, the update on the Stoughton Center District zoning project.
So, Mr. Charbonneau asked me to share that the second virtual public meeting, there was one on June 7th, is Monday, September 13th, from 7:00 to 8:30. I will post this, this will be posted down outside the Clerk's Office. We will also post the Google Meet on the website, and I'll put this on my Facebook Town page as well. And again, this is, make sure you've read the draft zoning, which is on the Town's web link. There is a presentation that you can review on the proposed changes. Again, attend the September 13th meeting, and also, there's a Survey Monkey where you can provide your input on that as well. Some changes have already been removed, we talked about, for instance, the sixth story is gone. But we want input, we had input in June, we will have input again. I do know that the concern about how much of it can be implemented by October 4th is going to be tough, and again, I think planning actually won't see it for a final vote until into October. So, what's going to happen is there may be some minor tweaks even then. So, we will put the draft in the warrant, and I spoke with Mark Tisdale, and that's how they have done these in the past, they put the draft in, and if there are minor tweaks that come from planning after the fact, or recommendations, they will work to make sure that that gets out to the public. We also will be hosting, again, prior to town meeting like we did before, Zoom meetings for anybody, I'm doing for all articles. Any article that we have, we will host multiple Zoom meetings for people to pop on, ask questions, talk about, and we probably will have a few more special ones just for this after the fact. But Mr. Charbonneau did want me to remind everybody, Monday, September 13th, from 7:00 to 8:30. And we will post the link, the Google link for this everywhere we can. We'll also put it in the, we have the Town Crier, that Ms. Harbach produces, which is virtual, and I will see if we also can get it in the saver.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gito.
Thank you. It was rare, let me repeat, rare, to put an article into town meeting on major zoning and then change it afterwards. I mean, not that it wouldn't be changed, but to put it in as a draft. And some of the changes that were made after the draft went in were not minor changes. I'm not sure that I want to endorse such a policy, quite honestly. And as to having the draft of the zoning online now, it is not. I went in and looked at the final, or the last zoning piece on the Planning Board's website, and it had six stories, and I was told, oh, no, that has changed to five. I mean, just for an example, I'm not saying that was the only thing. I spent a little bit of time looking at that stuff. So, I don't know where that new change has come in the last two or three days, but I'll check again when I go home.
I'll look as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Scott. No, go ahead.
The draft has to be, like, voted in an open hearing, so the final thing has to be, be knocked down like in a hearing. They can amend things on town meeting floor, but you can't just throw a draft in and go...
Yeah, it would be any amendments that came from planning.
So...
That would have to go on a town hall table, yeah, absolutely. What goes in there is basically the zoning, because the whole code has, the whole thing has to go.
Right.
Yeah, no, no.
Right, right, right.
No. Absolutely.
Okay, Madam Town Manager, let's move forward to the update on the Fire Station Building Committee.
So, very briefly, as I had mentioned when we did the presentation, we had two possible properties to consider, a smaller parcel of Park and a parcel at 400 Prospect. My, I had a team review the bids, they narrowed it to those two, and then they made a recommendation to me of 400 Prospect. I'm accepting that recommendation, and that is the site we are proposing to move forward on. Mr. Tisdale is very familiar with the site, he is part of that committee who reviews the selection along with Fran Brutinetti. The cost is approximately 1.1 million, gentlemen, I think it was 1.1 million for this property, it was the lowest cost. It also is a location that the chiefs have expressed that they are very comfortable with, minimal impact on traffic patterns that we would have to do, minimal roadway changes. It's the location, to be honest, that I think we were hoping would rise to the level. We did clear up that there were no outstanding tax issues, there's nothing to prohibit us from moving forward on that as far as we see. We will, at some point, just have to do some formal surveys, just to make sure that when we put it in front of town meeting, that we have all our ducks in a row, so that the public can be comfortable that we have surveyed it, and we have basic wetlands issues resolved, which, again, engineering is confident that we can cite this on this property very well. So, I'm very excited about that. We are meeting tomorrow to hammer down our final options to present to the board for funding, and give some very concrete numbers of what these things might mean to homeowners, what the options are, what it means to our budget, all of these things that we're talking about as long-range concerns, and it's really a board policy, and I think on how you, as a board collectively, feel we should bring this to the taxpayers. Is it a split of some exclusion and partially in the budget? Is it total debt exclusion? Is it totally in the operating budget debt? That really is a board decision, it's not mine, I'm not trying to duck it, I just think it's more of a philosophic policy of how you want to approach the debt on this. But we will give you numbers, Sue Herman is working with Cinder on a debt model on this overall, and we will have this to you at least a week ahead, I know, Mr. Gito, because it was, when we took a debt funding, you need some time to be able to review these things, and I know you had requested that that not be a last-minute, it certainly won't. So, we will have it to you, so, we're planning on September 7th meeting formally to ask you to take a vote, so that we can put it into the warrant appropriately as we move forward, but prior to that, I am hopeful that by August 31st, in your shared drives, you will have the options to review before we have a public discussion on it. Thank you. And I know the chiefs are here if there were questions about the property.
it's really not ours, they have an appointment standing, so, whichever way the board members want to. Okay, I'm trying to keep turning it off when other people, and I'm missing it, so, thank you. So...
Do you want a motion?
Well, yes, I'll take a motion, if we want to make a motion.
Do you want to do it?
We can do it either way, but I'll take a motion, I think it's cleaner, okay?
I would make a motion.
Thank you. Let me turn back the page here, I'm by it. Appoint Michael Varner to the Glen Echo Committee.
Set.
Okay, motions been made and seconded for Michael Varner to represent the, represent, I'm sorry, the Recreation Department on the Glen Echo Committee. Motion's made and seconded. On the motion, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, moving on, we have our public hearing, and Tim, you can come forward. So, our first public hearing, and before I read this, I just, I want to take a moment to thank Tim Leiford from National Grid on helping out with a telephone pole problem. I've been trying to get rectified for some time, and we had reached out to the DPW, they made a phone call, and I was told that there was a number in there. There was a very large piece of conduit, actually, in the travelway of a sidewalk at the intersection of Canton Street and Summer Street, and got a telephone number from Tim, and made a phone call, and I believe it was the next day it was taken care of. So, I don't know if it was the number the DPW had, or if it's the one that you gave me, but all I know is the next day it was fixed. So, I just wanted to thank you for jumping in and helping me out with that, so. All right, so, on this, we have the notice of public hearing. It's a public hearing held by the Select Board on Tuesday, August 17th, at 8:00 p.m. to consider the petition of National Grid and Verizon, who are requesting permission to erect, maintain a jointly-owned pole and wires to be placed there on together on such sustaining and projecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary. In order for the following public ways, way or ways, Porter Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, approximately 40 feet northeast from existing pole number one, plan known as Plan Number The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., third floor, and be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and may be livestreamed. Public comment will also be received up until 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, or by calling the Select Board at 341-1300, extension 9212, or email to dleblank@stoughton-ma.gov, per order of Joseph McCrisky, Chair of the Board, advertised in the Stoughton Journal, published on August 11th, 2021, and the applicant is the town of Stoughton, who was billed for that. So, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. On the motion, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is open. Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Timothy Leiford, National Grid Electric, 100 East Ashland Street, Brockton. For this first petition, National Grid is petitioning for one new jointly-owned pole to be located on Porter Street, approximately 40 feet northeast of existing Pole 1. This pole is for equipment upgrades and reliability improvements in the area.
Okay, and just from a visual, is this the one that's leaning over? It looks like it's going to snap about halfway down?
The proposed pole is to help for that replacement, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. All right, so...
Yeah.
Well, that's going, it's like a divining rod, it goes to where the power is. Okay, so, questions of the board, Mr. Carrara?
No, you asked the question, I...
Alleviate some of the problem on that pole, you going to be replacing Pole 1 soon, or...
Both of them are going to be replaced. Unfortunately, the standard that Pole 1 was originally built to doesn't exist anymore. So, this pole is going to help move some of that equipment, and also upgrade some of the other service equipment that we have in the area as well.
Yeah, there's like a basket full of transformers on that thing.
Yeah, it's a mess.
Thank you. Mr. Kavy?
I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
I have no questions, thank you.
Mr. Gito?
Who else in town do you have to talk to regarding...
Regarding the pole replacement?
Yes.
I believe letters went out to all the adjacent abutters, and they were notified of this hearing. If they have any questions, maybe, they should have, you know, come and showed up and asked whatever questions they had.
You don't speak with anyone else?
I believe the adjacent abutters are notified of the replacement for the hearing.
Oh, I mean, in addition to the abutters?
Yeah.
Do you have to speak with the DPW or the Engineering Department, or the Police Department, the Fire Department?
With the...
Health, I mean, you just name it.
With the submission of the petition?
Yes.
If any of those departments did have questions, I'd be more than happy to meet with them out on-site and go over any concerns.
Have they ever asked you a question?
In Stoughton specifically?
Yes.
Don't believe so, other towns, yes.
So, you just come before us to talk about poles?
And if anybody has any questions regarding the installation, be more than happy to answer them.
Would you like to talk to anybody else aside from us?
Anybody who has a question, I'd be more than happy to answer.
That's fine, thank you very much.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. Any one of our two participants, would you like to be heard on this public hearing? Seeing that, I see none. Anybody that is online, if they'd like to be heard in this public hearing regarding the pole relocation on Porter Street?
Online.
Okay, hearing none. I won't send a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Please identify yourself with a record, name and address.
Joseph Baeta, 239 Shamunk Street.
Okay, Mr. Baeta, please go ahead.
Joseph Baeta, 239 Shamunk Street. Is it Baeta? Please go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I apologize for not being in person. As noted by the agents of National Grid, that this is a 40-foot, approximately, pole that's being replaced, is that correct?
Yes. The proposed pole location does not currently exist, but there is an adjacent pole that will be replaced along with this work.
Does not currently exist. But there is an adjacent pole that will be replaced along with this work. To Mr. Gito's comment, has there been any other public comment and/or reach out by National Grid on this question?
Mr. Baeta, this was advertised in the Stoughton Journal, it was sent out to abutters, it's on the agenda. When it was posted, there was plenty of opportunity for anybody else. We didn't go out looking and going door-to-door to see if anybody wants to be heard, we've advertised it like we've done normally for public hearings of this sort for years. So, I don't know how we would blanket the whole community to find out if everybody had something. We've made our effort to advertise this, and I guess the only thing we could add to that is during this, just add a sheet that makes sure that it circulates to all the department heads, to see if they have any questions internally, specifically DPW, Engineering, Public Health, whatever.
If they have any questions internally, specifically DPW, Engineering, Public Health, whatever. May I ask or comment on that?
Well, what is your question on this word? If you have questions...
My question, my question would be that there were a number... My question, my question would be that there are a number of other situations within the community.
Okay, here, we're having this issue with this huge delay now, because you can hear the audio in the background there, and this is causing a huge delay.
I, I just turned off my system. I hope that helps.
Okay, what was your question, Mr. Baeta?
My, my question is that it seems to me that National Grid controls what poles are or are not reviewed and not the Board of Selectmen or the taxpayers. And this is an ongoing issue that's happened within the community. And respectfully to your comment that it's published and so on and so forth, I would ask that at some point the board consider, like it does with other issues, water and sewer, for example, that it takes the lead on getting requests from these taxpayers instead of the reverse, a multi-corporation big business that is taxing us every day and making us pay payments every day that are outrageous. We should reverse the conversation and have it be that the Board of Selectmen, or excuse me, the Select Board, ask the taxpayers of the community what are the needs from National Grid instead of reverse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. And to that point, Madam Town Manager, I think what I will do is make a phone call, because I know there's some DPU issues here that, that are here, and that this is a process that is set by the state through the DPU. And we're acting as our authority as street commissioners, because all these poles are in the public layout. So that is the authority that we have, whether we can, and I believe we can, very simple on this, and I think it's a good idea, that we should, starting tonight, add a sheet where all of our utilities are consulted, you know, for that point. Is there a water line near it, sewer line, whatever, and just make sure that the DPW, Sewer and Water Department are consulted, like we do on the same thing, Robin, with the licenses, just that they say no comment. Because if they have an issue, it's not a bad idea for us to have that here, Tim, and just say the DPW would like you to consider this. If, if we can add just that questionnaire, and it adds another layer of transparency, which is never a bad thing at all, that could be good. So I think for the next one, be prepared, that I think you should take it upon yourself to make the phone calls to DPW, Water and Sewer, Public Safety, Police Department, or whatever, and just to ask them if they have any concerns, so you can be ready to answer that question, you know, if it's asked by a resident. I think that's, you know, something that is a very quick fix. So, all right, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gito?
I was going just 180 degrees from where we seem to be going. I'm not sure why we have to have these. If there is some, if there is some issue that is going to affect the town, if it's a plowing issue, or, or a walkway issue, or something like that, perhaps there is some portion of town government that could review the location of a pole. And we don't have to deal with it unless there is an issue with, with, with the, with the pole itself. I mean, if, if we could get rid of 98% of these, we'd save an hour or two whenever we have these. And, you know, I'm, I'm not here to say, oh, you know, I know all about this pole. I don't know where it is at all. And, and I don't know what the issues might be with it. So why, why, I guess I'm asking the question, why is it before us, rather than why isn't it something that the DPW, who may be plowing the sidewalks, might deal with, or some other body? And maybe the town manager would know that. But I, I don't want to add more bureaucracy and time to something that may not have anybody even interested in it.
Right, well, again, I believe, you know, past experience and my minor dealings with the Department of Public Utilities, it's, it's covered in the state statute, and it is a requirement for the Selectmen to authorize the, the utilities to work within the town layout. So where they're working in the town layout, on a sidewalk, telephone poles right on the edge of the sidewalk, or could be at an intersection on town-owned land, we're required to sign off stating that we are where the work and that we authorize it to go on. They own the pole itself, but it's in our right away. So I'll get something that points it out where you know where it's our authority, because I'm.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that it's not. I'm just wondering.
You have to deal with it, though.
Whether or not there is a way to, to exercise our authority through another part of the town, and perhaps if there is an exception, we would set policy, if there's not, not a problem, then.
I'll, I'll check. I know what you're saying. I'll check, but I don't believe that anybody else can act as the street commissioners to vote that.
Thank you.
All right, so I believe it's going to be that we can have the.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah, well, right, right, exactly. I mean, it's got to be a public hearing. It's got to be in action of the street commissioners. So, but I will reach out to the DPU, get that, that document back for us. And I would imagine, Tim, you guys probably have something right off the top on your desk on that stuff as to why you have to come here, because I would tend to think, if you didn't have to, you wouldn't be here.
The process is pretty much the same for most towns, you know?
Right, okay, okay.
Just don't, don't bother.
No, I want to, I want to do it because I said I would. So, oh, believe me, if they, if we didn't have to go through these meetings, I'm with you. It, you know, we talk a lot as it is. Never mind if we can cut a few things off.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, moving forward, Joe, what, what do you have?
I guess my question is to Mr. Gito's comment that, based on your comment, based on your comment that this is regulated by the state, I believe you said that, am I correct?
That's what I, what I was told a while back, that we have to act on it, yes.
So, I, I don't, I don't labor the point that you're correct, because you're much more educated in this area than I am, so I'll defer to you. But I guess to, to all of the other utilities that we have within the community, it seems to me that it's a little bit of a reverse process than this process. So, if, if you're acting as water commissioners, as an example, it seems to me that you folks publish a public hearing, and then you have X, Y, Z things that happen. In this case, it seems like it's, it's an initiative by National Grid to the town and not the reverse. That was my point only. So I'm not going to continue to labor the point. It just seems to me that on behalf of every other utility within the community, the board acts as a progressive agenda item. These are the issues, tax increases, or increases to line items, or increases to issues. It seems as though with this utility, it's the reverse. They come to us when they need something that they want, instead of us saying what we want. That was my point. Thank you for your time. I am sorry to, to extend your time during the public meeting.
Nope, that's what it's for. Thank you, Joe. Okay, any other questions? Anybody else from online?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Identify yourself with a record, please.
I'm Mark Struck, precinct four.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, Mark? Okay, I'm sorry, Mark, okay, I didn't, I didn't catch the last name, I'm sorry, Mark. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Well, my question would be, is this going to be a single pole, a double pole, or a pole that you cut in half and stick to the side of a telephone pole?
This specific pole installation will be a single pole, standalone by itself.
Okay. Is it, and it won't have a, also, my other question would be, whether it's standalone, it won't have another pole that comes off at an angle at all, or any cables coming down to support it?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, piggyback off of Mr. Gito, on to, should it be coming before your board or not, would it be something that the board could, like other neighboring towns, create a commission or a board to have a, a committee to, what do you want to call it, check on the poles in the town to make sure that they're not doubled up and that they're taken care of?
Well, I think that's what we're going to.
If they have them repaired within, I forget, a certain number of days, that fines can be assessed to the pole owner.
Yeah.
Bring revenue into our town.
We're, we're going to be looking at that. We did mention earlier that we're going to look at putting a process that's reviewed by the DPW or the Engineering Department, just to make sure that we have their input as well. But where this is being acted on as street commissioners, this isn't anything we can submit to a committee to review it. It's got to go through the process of the open meeting and the public hearing, which we're doing tonight.
Correct.
So I think we'll, we will address that by, I think, adding the layer of getting the, the DPW and the utilities here to, to sign off on it. They've gone out and reviewed it. And Tim could follow up with them before he comes here to this meeting, just to ask them about any concerns they have and address it, if they have any, before it gets here.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else online that would like to be heard on this public hearing? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. On the motion, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Okay. And the chair votes in favor, the hearing is closed. What is the wish of the board?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On, any further discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay. All right, and we'll go to the next one. It's a notice of public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, at 8:10 p.m. to consider the petition of National Grid and Verizon who are requesting permission to erect and maintain a jointly owned pole and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protective fixtures as said company may deem necessary. In the following public ways, or, I'm sorry, public way or ways, for the service of 11 Evans Drive, known as Plan Number 30317648. The hearing will be conducted at Great Hall, Town 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., third floor, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and may be livestream. Public comment will also be received until 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email dlabank@stoughtonmass.gov. Perorador Joseph McCrisky, Chairman of the Board, was advertised in the Stoughton Journal on August 11th, 2021, and the applicant town, Board of, I'm sorry, the Select Board, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. Entertain a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Motion been made, second. Motion made and seconded. On the vote, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay. Tim, on the second application?
Thank you. For the second petition, National Grid is petitioning to install one new jointly owned pole, 1-50, to be located on Evans Drive, approximately 100 feet north of existing pole one, Evans Drive. And this is for a new service that is going to 11 Evans Drive.
Okay. All right, questions of the board, Mr. Gito?
No.
Ms. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Cavey?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Carrara?
One. What are you going to do with that pole on Central Street that's right across from, um, next, next one, sorry. This one.
Wrong, wrong hearing? Okay, all right. All right, so any other questions of the board? Any members of the public in the hall? Hearing none. Anybody at home would like to be heard on this petition? Last call for anybody at home would like to be heard on the petition, public hearing? Hearing none.
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion made to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the vote, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right, any questions anymore of the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On the vote, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And chair votes in favor. Okay. And the last one is a public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, at 8:20 p.m. to consider the petition of National Grid and Massachusetts Electric who are requesting permission to install and maintain manholes, ducts, and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures along the public way. Evans Drive, Plan Number 30317648. National Grid petitions to install five inch, five of two and four inch ducts from P1-50 on, on the property, on to the property of 11, 11, I can't talk tonight, 11 Evans Drive. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., third floor, and broadcast live via Stoughton Media Access and may be livestream. Public comment will also be received up until 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to dlabank@stoughton-ma.gov. Perorador Joseph McCrisky, Chair. It was advertised on August 11th in the Stoughton Journal, and the applicant, Stoughton Board, Select Board, Town Hall, was identified in the public meeting notice. So therefore, I will enter, accept the motion, open the public hearing. Motion been made.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Tim, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tim, if I could ask, hold on one second. If there's anybody at home that has their microphones on, would you turn the volumes down, because we get feedback, and that creates the problem with the audio visual. If we keep getting these problems, we have to disconnect the remote, because it interferes in the Great Hall. So if you could do that, and I think it's gone away, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Tim, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As previously stated, National Grid is petitioning to install approximately five feet of two four inch ducts from proposed pole 1-50, going on to the property of 11 Evans Drive. And this is also for a new service to 11 Evans.
Questions of the board, Mr. Gito?
No.
Ms. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Cavey?
I have no questions, thank you.
Mr. Carrara?
Is any of the conduit going to be underneath any hot top that the town maintains right now?
No hardtop that the, the town maintains, no.
Okay, all set. Okay, where this is a public hearing, anybody from the public in the hall would like to be heard on the issue? Seeing none, is there anybody at home that would like to be heard on this utility petition? If so, please unmute yourself, identify, and identify yourself with a record.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes. Identify yourself with a record, please.
Joe Baeta, 239 Shamunk Street. This is the third pub, this is the third public hearing this evening. Thank you all for your time and allowing for the public to come in via phone. I guess my question is, what are, how are these situations by National Grid being prioritized for the town of Stoughton, as it pertains to each of these issues?
Well, I don't know if the town of Stoughton prioritizes these. Tim, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but these are jobs that people request and updates on their services and so forth, for whatever building purposes, or expansions, and so forth, that they're required to meet certain criteria as part of that building process. And that is when they apply to you. You start to do it as a part of the process of upgrading the service at request of the building owner or property owner, and therefore you come to us to, to get the approval to work within the public way.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Biden, does that answer your question?
It does. Mr. McCrisky, just for the sake of earlier, I appreciate your comments earlier about trying to prioritize the idea of maybe having this situation go from the taxpayers and the board the other way, as it does in all the other utilities. It seems that in this situation, it's the reverse in some ways. Again, I'm a National Grid payer. I have no problem with them. They've been outstanding. But I do think that the board should consider the reverse as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else online that would like to be heard on this issue? Please identify yourself for the record. Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So made.
Motion been made? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the vote, Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion been made? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. On the motion, Mr. Gito? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. We'll, we'll talk. I think maybe what I may do is, if we have to, I'll have a little powwow meeting up here, have you come in, bring somebody from Verizon with you, and we'll get the key players in the room and see what we can do to change this up a little bit, so.
Sure.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's transparent, you know, and residents at home, you know, can understand the process, so.
Of course.
All right, great. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
What's that? Okay, so then now we go to, Ms. Roberts is all here, all rested up to get going. So we're going to talk about a couple of the ongoing topics we've been working on is to look at a review draft mission statement for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. It says votes may be taken. And this is, just so we're clear for people that don't have an agenda with them watching at home or online, is that this is a committee that the board decided to implement and to have Ms. Roberts lead on what the makeup of the board will do, be, and how many members. We haven't got to that point yet, although we do have applications. But a mission statement, and so that we can have time to review this, gather any questions we have as a board, where this will be a board of the, a committee of the Select Board. So with that, Ms. Roberts, the floor is yours. We all have our attachments here, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have in front of you is a draft mission statement and measurement of success of this committee and the task at hand. But before I start, I know the board, the Select Board, has a list of the resources that were used to draft this mission statement. But I wanted the audience to also know that the town of Easton, Massachusetts, municipal government lead and their website was used as a resource. Old Colony Planning Council lead was used as a resource. The city of Framingham, that is the HR Director and the Diversity Officer of the city of Framingham. The city of Boston is a colleague of mine, and the city of Boston's website. The REMAP trainer, that's the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan trainer, our lead person helped, and also I consulted with Dr. Graham. So this mission statement is a draft, as I said originally, and it is to promote the town of Stoughton as a welcoming community, a town that values its diversity, strives to create a community where everyone has an equal vote and a voice in the way the government works. Is a community where all people can thrive, where they live, work, and play. And it goes on to talk about how many members should be on this board. We've already talked about that. Each board, Select Board member will appoint one. Well, what is the term? I'm suggesting that there would be a two-year term. And then what is the purpose? So before we get to that, I will mention that last. But I wanted to also ask the board their opinion on changing the name from Diversity Equity and Inclusion to Human Rights and Equity and Inclusion Committee with a focus on Diversity Equity and Inclusion. And the reason, the logic for that, and the reason for that ask, is that there is a grassroots organization called Stoughton Diversity and Inclusion Organization. And sometimes it gets a little challenging to differentiate between the grassroots organization and our government arm, this arm that will report to the Select Board. But before you make a decision and before you have questions, I want to go on to say that this committee should, and I'm asking or requesting, that there be continuity and consistency to continue the use of the REMAP training and its tools. And once again, REMAP stands for the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan that we have been working with and on for this year. And the training ends approximately January 2022. The measurements of success should be metrics-driven. The committee is an advisor to the Select Board to ensure the town is doing what they say they are doing. And secondly, this committee will be a resource for the town's staff recruitment of diversity, equity, and inclusion. For example, it will help with, if we're trying to put people in the pipeline to take for advancement opportunities and open vacancies that are in the town. Well, how do you have a career fair? How do you have a successful career fair? It's no hidden agenda here. It's straightforward for me, but there may be some questions for you. And it's no questions because I spent a lot of time working with a lot of people that are familiar with this area. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Okay, Mr. Carrara, we'll start at your end.
On the, on the name change, I have a little bit of a problem with the name change because it was put out as a posting as one thing. Now it's coming in before there's even anything going on, and we're going to change it. Everybody has human rights. The day they're born, they have human rights. I don't want to end up going to the Joe Mokley courthouse like I did for the term "human rights." I'm very not happy with that. It was all right when it was the other way. It explained what it was. But human rights is a, is a big thing. It leaves an open door for us to be sued if it isn't going the way that a certain group wants it to go. And somebody on, that we picked on that board would also be at risk under the words "human rights." Everybody has human rights. Nobody's treading on them. And I just, I've got experience with this, and I don't want to go down that hole again. I just want to let you know that it's a, it's a big opening to everybody on this board with that word "human rights." It's such a big expanse. It takes, it goes beyond what we're looking at and what this mission statement is. That's all I have with that, and...
Well, thank you, Mr. Carrara. Thank you.
I don't want to seem like I'm down on it. I'm not. It's just something that I think the board has to know about. I've experienced it, and it wasn't, it wasn't a good thing. And I was sitting here at the same time when it went down. And nobody should have to go through what I went through. The committee's first year is going to focus explicit to race. Everybody's everybody. I mean, I'm not sure what this, this is going to do. If, if we're looking to fill positions in the town, I would rather see qualified people instead of just trying to just fill things and that if we're going to do it, like you said, have those, like, training days-
Career fairs and training and-
Yeah, like that. That, that's a good thing. We could keep that stuff on file, but inclusion is everything, you know? It's everybody. It's, you know, you could be yellow with stripes or whatever. But I'm just saying that I'd just like to, you know, digest some of this now that we saw it. And those, that's the only couple of things I had to say. I'll let somebody else go on.
Mr. Cavey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Roberts, once again, Vice Chair Roberts, thank you for, for leading this and documenting a draft for us to start to work with and bounce some ideas off of you and as you've bounced some ideas off of us. I actually do have, not so much a concern, but just kind of more of a question with regard to the use of the word "human rights" here, only to the extent that I want to make sure that this committee is sort of named appropriately in a way that corresponds with what their actual responsibilities are. And I just wanted to better understand how, like, how this committee would be involved in concerns of human rights as, as you understood it, when you suggested this name. If you don't mind.
Okay, let me ask Mr. Gito, do you have a question under this, the same, the title of... Then I can answer it all at the same time.
That sounds fair.
I had talked with you earlier. I talked with you earlier. I had a similar concern as Mr. Carrara in terms of the breadth of the term "human rights" as opposed to where, where the committee started. And I, as I said to you, I thought that instead of changing the name, if you had two committees, one was sort of a grassroots in yourself, it may be sort of a more inclusive to continue to have two of those. I mean, have, have them the same, and you might be able to do better with that. But, but I'm, those were the, those were the comments that I made to you.
So thank you, everyone, for those questions. But I can answer that question. When I thought of, well, I was having a challenge when I talked to people and they asked me, well, what would differentiate your committee, the committee that reported to the board, with the grassroots organization? And I constantly felt myself saying, no, this is the government arm. Oh, no, no, that's, that's the grassroots arm. So I said, well, why don't, since the name is not finalized and we had agreed that at a later date we would possibly rename it, I said, well, now would be a good time. And then I could always explain to you what I meant by "human rights." And I think when I say "human rights," it's, we're all human. That's what we have in common. It's nothing any different or nothing hidden about that, nothing deeper than what we have in common. And if you start peeling back the onions, you would see that we have that in common without any explanation. If we wanted to leave the name the same, which I was perfectly happy with, the town of Stoughton, Diversity Equity and Inclusion. So diversity is, you know, the mix of people. Do we have the mix of people involved? The equity comes, well, let's measure to see who is disproportionately advantaged or advantaged. And then the inclusion is, well, those that are impacted negatively, pull them in. So I'm perfectly okay with that. I know the grassroots organization does not want to combine with the government arm. So if you're okay with the name... Oh, I'm sorry. I also wanted to mention that when I did talk with, with Mr. Gito and someone else that made a comment, like, I don't know, I'd feel kind of uncomfortable with the name "human rights." I was prepared to say to Mr. Chairman and to my fellow board members, well, let's send it to legal. But if you are against that, but everything else looks like, as if it's copacetic, then, you know, I'm okay. But I would like to hear from Dr. Graham. She has the-
Just, yeah, a small follow-up on this. And I agree that there may be, and I hadn't even thought about it when we talked, but there may be a legal implication to the term "human rights." No question. My concern with leaving it so similar to the grassroots is that we don't have, and I say this with all due respect, we don't have any control, if you will, over what direction they go. And if it were to go in a direction that is not the direction that the board, that Vice Chair Roberts, that HR is seeing where we want to go, that confusion could be problematic, and it could actually almost discredit this group if, and I'm not saying they would, but we have no, there's absolutely no oversight of that. It is a completely grassroots organization. So I think there's a risk with that blurring that might be problematic. It may be as simple as starting it with Equity Inclusion and Diversity, so that when it's loosely referenced, it might be the Equity Group. But it's always the first word that we call something. That's the Diversity Group. This would be the Diversity Group as well. So it might even be simple as, as simple as in giving it an acronym, the EID or whatever we want to give it as an acronym. Just something so that when it's referenced, just rhetorically, that it has a division. And that would be my only suggestion. I'm just concerned about a blurring of that. This board is going to make decisions on what this particular group should do, the purview, the policy, how it's going to interact. If that grassroots group goes in any direction that isn't in that same pattern, it could be confused, and I think that could be problematic. So I would just recommend just flipping the words around or just making it where it's just a little different.
I think the problem that you recognized, Ms. Roberts is exactly right, is that, that the work that they, that this grassroots organization is doing is autonomous, and, and they should sort of feel comfortable doing that. And at any point, it's almost a marketing problem, right? If, if they start, you know, if they are soliciting donations and people think they're donating to the, to the town, or, you know, there's all these, these sort of excellent reasons why they should be able to operate autonomously and we should be able to operate without any confusion, without people being confused. So I think that, I think the problem exists. I think we definitely should consider another name. I am horrible at names, so I'm going to rely on, on people who are a lot stronger than that than myself. And so, you know, the Human Rights and Equity Committee is leagues ahead of anything I could have come up with. I just, I think, though, that there might be still a room where there still could be some ambiguity or misunderstandings with that, what exactly the charge is of this, of this group. Every other thing on here, so that, this is like small potatoes. It's like, what are you going to call the album? You know, it doesn't, not as important. The, the real meat and potatoes part of this, the really important stuff, I am entirely on board with, committed to. I think that the vision you've laid out is, you know, coherent, thorough, and I think, I think it's, it's an excellent start for this committee.
Thank you so much. If okay to speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, great.
One, one of the comments that Mr. Carrara brought up was regarding race. So I wanted to take that, and I'm just chipping away at the comments and making sure that everyone feels comfortable as we move forward. So the reason that race is our starting point is because we're in the program, the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan grant. And that is an intersect, if you look at a Venn diagram, that is the intersect between all peoples that are disproportionately impacted. It's the baseline typically is based on race. So for the- race. So, for those two reasons, that's why that would be our initial focus. However, since everything intersects with that, we're talking about women's rights, and that's why I use the term "human rights." All rights kind of leads us back to race, and that's what we have the training, and that's what I didn't want this committee to fail to use as we move forward. That is an excellent tool to kind of dissect any problem that we have, and I didn't want to lose that knowledge base and that skill. So, that was the reason for race as being the primary focus for this fiscal year.
Do you have a problem with changing the, to equity, inclusion, and diversity?
No, I do not have a problem with changing the title or the name of the committee at all.
I think that, that Dr. Grimm may have, may have solved the problem.
I thought she solved the problem, too. I wrote it down when I had that pen in hand, and I wrote that down.
Scott, I wrote down "Stoughton Advisory Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion."
Okay. Put my marketing hat on. That, it sounds good, but it's kind of long.
It's really no longer than what we started with, except that it spells out and separates you from the grassroots ones to what it actually is.
Well, that one is "Stoughton Diversity and Inclusion Organization." So, say yours again, Mr. Carrara.
"Stoughton Advisory Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion." I figured it showed some teeth that it was under the Board of Selectmen without adding that in.
What is everyone else? So, I guess we have it narrowed down to Dr. Grimm's recommend, suggestion, and it's doing the same thing, just...
I think people will naturally truncate that to just be the Diversity Committee or Diversity Group, you know, like, they, so, on your, you know, the T-shirt, it's not, you're gonna be a little, it might, it might be there. But when you're just gonna talk about it casually, I think people are going to mention it by a much shorter name, and that will end up exactly in the same place.
Go DEI Committee.
I was gonna use an acronym. That's why if you flip it, if you put the diversity at the end, you could call it the EID Committee, Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity.
Yeah.
They also speak in acronyms now, anyway.
Just that, I, you know, until now, I didn't really give it much thought, but I kind of think having "Stoughton" in there, whether it's advisory or not, just take out the word "advisory," and where it refers to the "Stoughton." And Scott, that was yours. I mean, what was yours again? You, what was that name? Say it again. So, I have the right order.
"Stoughton Advisory Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion."
Okay. How about "The Town of Stoughton Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee?"
What if you, what if you take the combination, so, how about "Stoughton Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity"? That way, you put "diversity" at the end, so people will reference it as the "Stoughton Equity Committee," because they're gonna use the first two words to reference. I agree that "Stoughton" should be in there?
Yeah.
That's the only...
So, people know it's a town committee.
So, if we just put "Stoughton Equity, Inclusion, and Diverse," that gets, we don't have a bad acronym, do we? S.E.I.D. I want to make sure we don't have some naughty acronym that's like, that candidly get yourself in trouble with that.
Yeah, you gotta think that one over, right?
You gotta think that one over. That's how we ended up, that's how we ended up with the schmooed.
Yeah.
So, you could do "Stoughton Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity." It keeps all the words in there. It puts "Stoughton" in there to make it official, and it stops the confusion of "Stoughton Diversity" being blurred, I think.
Excellent.
Would you, I'm gonna throw a curveball here, and I'm going to rip somebody else off. I've been Googling this, and diversity...
Nike symbol.
Yeah.
You're right.
Diversity, uh...
What is this check sign?
Equity and Inclusion is, is the term. Everybody, every department uses that, it seems like. But there is, I was able to find one that actually had a name that appealed to me. It's, in our case, it would be the "Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee." Does that sound, it's, it seems to me quite different than, than the grassroots organization with, working within the town. I think it crosses, crosses off all the, all the major things, and, but it's so long as it, once again, doesn't spell something offensive, and if people aren't in board with that. So, "Equal Opportunity Committee."
I'm liking it.
S.E.O.C. Yeah, nothing bad. We don't have to worry about...
Oh, don't worry, something will pop.
Oh, somebody will.
And you know something? When you said, "offending somebody," trust me, somebody's gonna be offended. I mean, you know, you cannot build the perfect wheel anymore. You know, somebody will say the spokes are the wrong color.
That is, the Department of Defense uses "diversity management" and "equal opportunity" as the name of their office.
I'm good with that, what of everyone? Everyone's happy.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we'll bring it back. We'll get it reviewed and plug that in. And then I did want to pick up just briefly, and, you know, and I'll think out loud, which could be dangerous, but, you know, on the thing of the first year, you know, I really, tell me why I'm wrong, if I am, in this thinking, is that when it says for the committee's first year, the focus will be explicit to race as the most persuasive form of injustice. And if we're gonna correct injustice, do we do that by dissecting it, or do we just include everybody? And what's the help of recognizing race as the, you know, again, the most persuasive? I understand it's out there. We know it's out there. We're making great strides. We're here talking about it, which is an example of that. But a third of our town is Portuguese. So, if we're talking about inclusion, we should just be putting everybody into one town and to not talking about one group at a time, because I think that's the problem that got us here with siloing. So, I don't know, and again, a very good friend of mine said, "You haven't lived this, so you don't understand it." So, I understand what I don't understand. So, that's what I'm looking for guidance on, is that when we just talked about offending somebody, will there be somebody else that's offended? Because we've put that in, but we didn't talk about this group, or that group, or this group. So, you know, looking at the demographic, I mean, again, I just want it to work, and I want anybody who gets involved to feel that they're included in this, that, you know, so it's not that I have any hesitation. I just, I don't know. That's what I'm asking you.
Okay. Demographics is important, oh, I'm on, demographics is important, and we can't be afraid of saying the word "race," and that we're going to research race. Mr. Cabe brought up the census, and I was looking at that also myself. That's what I have on my iPhone. So, the 2020 census data, and currently, so our demographics has changed. Right now, it's in 61% white, 17% black, 7% Latina, 5% Asian, compared to the last time we had the census, which was in year 2010. It was 78% white, 11% black, 3% Latina. So, we are changing as a town. So, why not look at that? And why not see who's being disadvantaged? Why not see if we can get more of the demographics spread, sprinkled through the town, and working on all levels of government? And why not have a career fair and recruit and make sure that they know, these students that are coming up through the pipeline, that they know that there are other positions that they can be besides doctors, and lawyers, and teachers. They can be a town manager. Or get involved with volunteering, to be on the select board. Why not? Go toward those people, go in their culture, and, and help understand that. And then maybe start off, someone said to me, like, maybe have events at some of the, like, at the ice cream place here in Stoughton, because most people like ice cream. Like, who doesn't like ice cream? And we get to know everyone, and we get to know the culture.
Well, no, I agree. There's a lot, there's a lot we can do. I just didn't know what, you know, just explicit to race, is that, as I had mentioned to you, we were doing this in the 90s with the Portuguese community, you know, to make sure that everybody was included. We didn't focus on just Portuguese. You know, we focused on the town, making the Town of Stoughton through boards, commissions, employees, volunteers, homeowners, renters, you know, everybody is one community. So, that's the only thing I don't know if we, if we're saying to another group that we're not looking at them, because we're saying right here, our first year is gonna be explicit to race. So, I don't know if, if, again, I'm willing to say I don't know what I don't know, but it looks like we're just focusing on one element of the town, instead of being diverse and inclusive. So...
That's right. And that's just for the, we're saying the first year. We don't know, as you peel back the onion, what you're gonna find, right?
But wouldn't that be the same with everybody?
If it would make, see, I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable talking about race, and ethnicity, and culture. I'm comfortable. Some other people are not. So, if it, to make everyone feel comfortable, we, we're going to look at slices of the pie, whether we call it out or not. It's gonna come up in a discussion, but we don't have to put it in the mission statement. So...
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm saying. I just don't know what benefit is by just using that. When, if we're gonna be all-inclusive, and everybody, it's, you know, I don't care who you are. If you're coming here, we may end up with some Afghan refugees that are coming in here. You don't know. I mean, they're gonna be leaving more, are gonna be leaving more and more. Our own governor said he'd be willing to help. Who knows? Who knows what diversity is gonna be? The way this town looked, you know, there's a couple of us here that will remember what this town looked like in the mid-'90s. Doesn't look like that anymore.
Doesn't look like that anymore.
Okay? But it's not one group. It's a bunch of people. I mean, so, that's the only thing that I'm not sure if we're hurting ourselves, that some people may feel that this is being focused on race, when it should be focused on everybody. I mean, it, that's just my...
Well, it's a, it's a hard conversation to have, Mr. Chairman, and it's a hard conversation to have with people that aren't used to having this conversation. And the old idea is to bring a comfort to this discussion, and know that there are groups of people that are being disadvantaged because of their race.
Right. And again, that's the thing. There are people being disadvantaged because of income?
Yes.
Because of education?
Yes.
Because of opportunity?
Yes.
I mean, so, I mean, there's so many ways that society, you know, can stymie. I mean, the way things have been, it's not, it's a world economy now, which is the first time we've actually seen this, where you've seen your town be one way only 15 years ago, where you knew everybody driving by the street. You walked into the coffee shop, you knew everybody in the coffee shops. If your kids messed up, you found out about it before they got home, because everybody you knew. But it's not, it's not that way anymore. And, you know, and again, I just think, you know, if we're throwing a net, we should be throwing the net over everything, you know, and, and working on it. Let people come forward, whatever it is, as I had mentioned to you about what we did in the 90s with making sure that we had somebody that spoke Portuguese on Police and Fire, because when, and this could be anybody with Latino, or any, any other race, ethnicity, you know, genders, I mean, as well, you know, we've got to make sure that it's everybody, you know? And that was just my thought. I thought, why are we mentioning this when we're talking about total inclusion? I mean, I know a gay couple, that they have said, "Two," you know, "That's good," because for a long time, we couldn't walk down the street, you know, and now they walk down the street. Or, you know, there's just so many things that have been said. I just, I just think we're going in that area that, you know, really, almost that we're limiting it, the scope. And maybe it's just me. I hope it's not. But it's not, it's not enough to keep going all night. It just was my thoughts. And just as we think this through, so...
I'd like to just add...
The audience is having difficulty hearing Dr. Grimm, and Mr. Carrara, and Mr. Cabe.
We're not talking, that's why.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I mean...
Yeah.
I do have a couple of, uh...
Okay. Well, I think what some of that problem may be is, you know, again, if it is, and this will be the problem, that, you know, people at home should understand that we still seem to be having problems with audio that people can't understand or can't hear. And unfortunately, if we can't resolve this before the next meeting, we probably won't have the remote, because it, it doesn't, when we're telling how, everybody, we want to be transparent, if this system doesn't allow us full access to have this ability to have people remote in, then we're not being transparent. So, it's gonna have to be where, if you want to be at the meeting, you're gonna have to come in here and have your voice heard in the hall. So, I am trying to work with everyone, but it seems that there's not a meeting that goes by that we don't have a problem somewhere. So...
I think I may have actually had my mic off at one point when I was speaking. So, that may have been a technical error.
Okay. So, well, we used to have our little camera that we talked, it seemed to go on us, but now that's not moving around much. So, so, okay, so I would just ask, again, if we really could watch your microphones and make sure it's green when you're talking. So, okay, so what's, what are we gonna do from this point now? Do we want to take these notes, come back and, you know, put the name change, look at, should we send it out now to have it reviewed by council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think my next step is to change the name, and if the board feels comfortable having, for the first year, "Race," that comment removed, or leave it in, if you don't really care, if you can just give me an idea. If it's just, "Mr. Chairman..."
So, I do have, I do have a couple of thoughts on this, and it's just, um...
Okay, go ahead. So, we can make the change. And then we can send it to council, so we can make sure, you know, everything is clean and above board.
And I may have been misinterpreting your comments here, but my understanding of, of sort of attacking races of First Order of Business was simply because it was, it allowed us to leverage a program we're already using, we're already doing, remap, and then basically just taking that, that, that programming and providing it to this board, and they just kind of carried along as they developed their own programming in other areas. So, it was like, you know, you guys have already started the run. You're kind of just handing the baton off. And, and so, there's already this work that's been done, and they can continue on. And I, so I understand that. I think that's, you know, from, from my own experience with projects, this makes a lot of sense to me. Rather than, you can't eat the whole pie in one bite. Like, you gotta kind of start somewhere. And, and since you already have a roadmap to, to show people, you know, how to attack other issues in a similar way, it would make sense that you start, you know, with this head start for them to begin. So, I agree with that. On the other hand, you know, the, the problem I've noticed with, with some, some young boards, also some, some of the older committees that we have, is that they, they often lose touch with their mission. And, and my fear is that, that as they get enthusiastic about solving problems related to race, they may, you know, lose sight of the fact that they have a broader mission. I don't know if that's true. Maybe it's not. But, but I, but I do want to make sure that we, we don't, we don't lose sight of that. Additionally, I, even though they are an advisory committee, you know, I think it's, it's appropriate for an advisory committee to have some autonomy over like what, what it is they're looking at. So, you know, writing up their first, their first agenda and saying like, "These are the things you're gonna tackle," I think is certainly our prerogative. If there's something specific that we want deliverable of some kind, I think that's also appropriate. And, you know, I think that if we set up, this is something we don't have to decide today, but if we set up some early deliverables and say, you know, within, you know, within three months, something, we want to have an idea of, of your understanding of, of, you know, the areas of diversity that are at an issue in the town, and how, you know, and maybe within the next six months, some, some sort of a roadmap to, to resolve that, to remedy any of those issues, any of those, you know, anywhere we can find areas where people do not have the opportunity, a fair where people do not have the opportunity, a fair opportunity, an equal opportunity, perceived or, or whatnot, however it happens, is, you know, we're moving forward, we're going to fix what was there, and, and certainly, these issues do exist. I don't want to go on at length, but I, I also agree, you know, one of the things that's, you know, and this people who understand it a lot better than I do, but one of the things that's sort of, it's, one of the things I discovered when I was studying philosophy, you see this in Aristotle and all, you know, Kant and whatnot, is that, that, one of the things that's, that's really unique about thought is that, that it, so much of it is breaking things up into categories and understanding them that way, and it's a natural attribute that we have, like, you don't have to see too many trees before you get the idea of what a tree is, you can see one you've never seen before and still recognize it as a tree. You can do that with similar things, and we, we're quite good with categorizing. When we discuss issues like, you know, it could be race, gender, sexuality, it could be gender identity, the list really can go on to the, as far as people feel like they can, they can find distinguishing characteristic that, that will allow them to create a separate category. And finding this sort of area where you're able to do the, the most good, you know, there's not going to be a silver bullet, you know, and I think that, that I think I really want to make sure that, to, to the extent that, that, sorry, in agreement with, with Chairman Chriskey, is that it's, at some point, we really have to, to sort of zoom out from any one particular problem and see if we can understand better what is, what we can do to not fix necessarily issues with race or with, with gender or what it might be, but to zoom out and actually sort of look at what's, what's innate about us, what can we fix that is innate about us to, so that these issues, so that we're not sort of automatically doing these things, that we're, that we're not, you know, we're developing a system where it actually, you know, anybody has, has an opportunity based on their, their abilities. I, I feel like I'm, I'm rambling now, so I'll stop. But I, but general, generally, I understand, I, I agree with what you're, what you're doing here. I just want to make sure that we don't be, become myopic, because I, this, this, this committee is going to have an unbelievably complicated task that is absolutely critical to our success as a town, I think, in my view. Thank you.
See, I like the way you put that, because you answered my question, and it wasn't, I guess we just kind of slipped a little bit, the way that Steve answered that, you know, maybe think of it a little bit different. The, now, I, I know that, and I just have to ask, because I know we'll be talking about Remap very quickly, but we have Remap, we have our new, yeah, all right, all right, I'll get you some other problems. All right, all right, the, so we have Remap, we have our committee, and then we have the, the, the grassroots committee. Is there a benefit to three committees? I mean, why are we not, why wouldn't we do something that involves Remap in this committee? Because, again, with that, with overlap, you're going to have total confusion, and people are going to get the wrong, they're not going to get the message, they're going to get, which one is the message? Which one are we going with here? And that can become, you know, very, and this is, this is something we're going to grow into, and we're going to build into and get better at, but when we're talking about the people that were the intended audience, you know, as anybody that feels that they're not involved, they're not treated equally or whatever, who do they turn to? Are they going to go meet somebody at the coffee shop with the grassroots one, or are they going to come over to Town Hall and meet with somebody in the lobby on the Remap Committee? I mean, it seems that, you know, we can't control what a citizens committee does, without a doubt. There could be 24 of them doing the same old thing. But when it's something that the select board, you know, is, is putting together, I think we need to find that, that group where we bring in a couple of town employees, maybe we change the makeup, and up to the town manager, whether there's a need for Remap any longer, but we bring a couple of the Remap members here, maybe we include the town manager, to have two people of Remap on this committee as well. So, just...
So we, we had this, we had a long discussion about this, actually, Vice Chair Roberts, myself. I, the grassroots is the grassroots. There's really nothing we can do about that. Remap has a finite date, I believe it's January of '22 it ends. So there is a finite date. Vice Chair Roberts is the liaison from the board to Remap. And what we're suggesting is that she would bring the knowledge of Remap to this new group. I do not envision the Remap employee, the employees, because not all of them are even Stoughton residents.
Right.
And appointed advisory committee should be residents. So we talked about the fact that they're not residents, and, and sometimes we'll have staff liaison, and we can do that as a person, but frankly, a tremendous amount of staff time has been dedicated to Remap, and I think the finite time that it's, it's done, the training has happened, they've gone through the training, that's great, and I think Vice Chair Roberts can bring what we're working on in Remap over to the other group.
Great. All right, you answered the question. Scott, you had a question?
Well, since we're touching on the Remap stuff, I was looking at the dates and history, Career Exploration Day, and there's one place in there that says, "Purpose to attract, inform, and promote various positions, town, school, government, to increase the pool of candidates in the pipeline." Wouldn't it be good to have, like, a selectman in there to talk to these people, a current sitting selectman to talk to these people, other than yourself where you're here, 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 but nobody else is in there, there, there? This is inclusion. You know, somebody who's been on the board a long time, Joe, is, has got a lot to offer to those people, these young kids who want to get involved. I'm probably the, the second most on this board with time in now.
Well, a good chair delegates, so you're talking this all over.
No, I'm just saying that people with something to teach these kids, if they want to get involved, at what level? I sat on nine years on finance now. Now I, I'm back on here, and, and prior I was something else, but I'm just saying, if these kids want to know what they're getting into, or people what they're getting into, they should talk to people that are into it.
I, I think, and I think that part of this is on that Remap plan, when we're talking about career fears, civics, the, the goal would be to talk to all schoolchildren who are interested, invite all children, all high school kids, let's say, to spend a day in shadow. Are you interested in shadowing a town manager? Are you interested in shadowing a planning director? Are you interested in shadowing a procurement agent? Let them understand what those jobs mean and do, and how that impacts their everyday life. So I think in those cases that you're pointing out related to the Remap portion of this discussion, absolutely, if a board member wants to talk about what it means to get involved and, and run for office, it, I mean, it's, it's, that would be ideal. But I think it broadens out to, that's where town staff starts to come in and to help support this, to encourage, I mean, I think the position I've taken on all this right throughout, from the beginning, is my problem is I don't have a pool from which to choose. I have, for any job, I don't have a lot of applicants, generally, regardless of race, color, religion, I just don't have a lot of applicants coming into municipal government. And I think we have a lot of kids who don't really know. I did not know in high school when I was planning my career, if you had ever said to me, well, you know, someday you're going to be a town manager, I would have said, what does that do? I, I went to pre-vet out of high school. But maybe if someone hit excited, I always thought local government was kind of intriguing, but maybe if I understood, because I grew up in a mayoral form of government and didn't even know what a town manager was, maybe I would have taken that path earlier. Maybe we're missing kids that we lose. So I, I think that part of it for us is exciting kids, for me, to get them into the pipeline, to go into the colleges, to get degrees in public administration, this is where we're lacking, because we don't have a pool. And, again, if the focus is race, if the focus is religion, if, whatever the focus is, it's encouraging kids to want to get excited, that's sort of my bent on the civics end of this. So I, I think, to your point, yes, a select board member may be taking a kid through what a meeting, watching a meeting with a, a young person, and getting them to understand, what does it matter when a liquor license application comes up? Like, why does it matter? Well, it does. And it matters because it's in your backyard, and your parents care, and they pay taxes. What, what do I do every day? What is it, what do labor unions do? Encourage kids to understand the importance of that, the history of it, that's how we teach them. So I think you're right. I think we all have to participate to some degree, and if we're talking truly inclusion, then yes, we all should be participating in some capacity or another in this. So I think I just volunteered my staff for a lot of stuff, too. So, Joe, you delegated, and I just volunteered my team, so I get to delegate, too.
I think there's only two people that will remember the time that I did just that with, I had a 15-year-old here, I know Ms. Walsh will remember it, Mr. Jito May, that when I sat down the end, I had a member of the Stoughton Middle, well, junior high at the time, sat right beside me, and I let the, the young man vote for me, you know, I says, just vote yes, and I voted my yes as well. And he found that to be such an enjoyment. And you're right, what you had mentioned. When I left high school, God rest her soul, Mrs. O'Donnell was shaking her head at me, and she said, you, if you applied yourself, you could be brilliant. And I said, Mrs. O'Donnell, I just want to work at my uncle's garage, run equipment, and drive trucks. And she said to me at that time, she goes, you never know what life has in store for you. Fast forward some years, I think I was, my second or third term, and I was chair, and she said to me, do you remember what I said to you? And I says, it rings in my ear every day, and she asked me, do you ever think you'd be doing this? I said, you couldn't have get me to bet on it for a million dollars. So you, you really, and then, maybe this is something we ask the, the school department to be involved with as well, you know, because there's going to be class presidents, there's going to be student council, you know, that would love to do something like this. And I, I think there's a lot of opportunity, and there's a lot we can do, I think, to encourage people. There are, there are some people that are, you know, multimillionaires in our town, that if we could ever, you know, introduce these kids, look at the connections to Hollywood we have here in Stoughton. Our own residents have made it big in Hollywood, or in, you know, in music. You know, Laurie McKenna, you can live in Stoughton, and you can do great things. Kenny Warmald, who went on to star in movies in Hollywood, now is doing dance choreography for some of the largest stars in, in the country. So, you know, there's a lot that people can do, and, and I think this is what we need to do at that base level, is to change the message that, you know, that people seem to never get. And that could be, you know, whether you have a single mother that was bringing you up by herself, and she couldn't afford to do all these things. So you didn't get that exposure that some of the, the richer kids in town got, which, you know, my generation, or Scott's, when his father owned his company, kicked his ass out of the house, said, you're working for the company, you know, and he's still there. So it's, and I know Scott said, he had the chance to be a firefighter, and he missed out on it. So it, so, you know, there's a lot there that, you know, that we have the opportunity, you know, learning from some of our own problems that had happened, and our own, the way we were raised, you know, that we didn't get that, you know, that empowerment that you can do better, and if we can have this as part of that, you know, we will change the world.
And I, I think that, you know, when we look at the census numbers that Vice Chair Roberts pointed out, if the goal of this still goes back to the original goal of diversity and represent, representative applicant pools, just by virtue of the fact that the census is changing, we will pick up a more diverse group of students, because our high school is more reflective of that. So as long as we hit it broadly, we'll bring in that, that diverse pool, and again, it's about encouraging these kids to go on for post-secondary. I really think we need to work with our local colleges on recruiting kids into these programs. I think that there's a whole lack of recruitment of kids. And I, and I, and again, not to stereotype, but if you take a young person in the inner city in Boston, and you talk to that person about the importance of 40B housing, and that it's not done in a project format, where we saw the results of what happened in the '70s experiment and model, which basically created horrible environments to, for young people of, of different races and religions, but particularly poverty situations, and trapped people in poverty situations, you know, if we talk about a kid in a city who lives in that and say, you know, you could change that, you could talk about how your parents could have afforded something in a better area, in a nicer area, and, and, you know, and we want to be that in this town and open those doors. And again, you know, it's the reality, that, that child is probably not exposed to that excitement of that option. I have no problem with reaching out to communities like Boston and Brockton, and even working with kids in other communities that are interested in being part of something like that. And that's why I think we go to the colleges, because they're the ones who really should be going out into our, our region, if you will.
I've, to, to that end also, or in the same vein, I'm kind of curious to what extent you could, you could actually intentionally create a Christine Howe model, right, where, right, she, she always talks about how, how it was her experience with the rec department that was, opened the doors to municipal government for her. And I, I think that's, you know, we, we do have, every year, we have, we have young people in this, during the summer, intern with us, or, or work for us, to the extent to which we could take advantage of that opportunity to show them the importance of, of our government, type of government. Maybe sometime, maybe some point in the future, we can talk about scholarships, huh?
Right. This is a, a good time to segue to the next agenda topic, because I'm so glad you all volunteered to be a part of the career fair, because, you know, once we start getting some traction, get planning, of course, we were going to come to you and say, yeah, can you, and can you be a part of that career fair? Can you be a part of that, that model? And I'm, I'm advocate for modeling, we model everything, especially in finance. We model finance. We talked a little bit about there being millionaires in the town of Stoughton. Well, what if you modeled your behavior after a millionaire? You'd probably become a millionaire yourself, or, you know, whatever each of us do for a living, a town manager. If you modeled yourself after that, that's what you would become.
She's a millionaire.
Of course she is. But that just leads me to the, the Remap projects, when I worked with Dr. Graham, on the, the three Remap projects that we're going to work on. The first one was the history of the town of Stoughton. So we want to talk about those success stories, who's, how they started out and became an actor in Hollywood, who became the first female detective in the town of Stoughton. And it's going to be set up, we're, we're setting it up that it's very entertaining, it will be a timeline, a vertical timeline, and have little pop-ups, and someone talk about the history of Stoughton at different points in time, you know, how we started off as, and with the indigenous, the Native Americans, and, and where we are now, so through, through time, and, you know, I know someone has already reached out to Ms. Walsh to, to kind of pick her brain, and hopefully she'll be on that timeline chart, and that would be such a wonderful thing. And, you know, it just falls forward, who was the first female police chief? Who was the first female town manager? And it's just so many success stories, and we want to record all this, and we want people to know. So that's the history. First project, the history of Stoughton. The second one is Career Fair, and we talked a lot about that, getting people in the pipeline, promoting Stoughton as a welcoming community. And then the, the final one was, we have an open position, that is, the Veterans Affair, the Director of Veterans Affair, and wouldn't it be nice if we can get a multicultural person to fill that position? But before we can jump the gun and go down that road, maybe it's, what are our, look at developing a job description, and where do we advertise for these positions? We need a broader reach, a more global reach, to reach a more diverse population versus what we're doing today. So we just have to talk it out and plan it out, and if you plan things out and you model correctly, you'll get the results that you're looking for. So those are the three projects, and on paper, it just seems to be so straightforward and just a small thing, but these are huge projects, and they're really not projects per se, they are initiatives. So, thank you very much. If you had any questions on those three, I'm happy to answer those. Number three on your paper?
Yeah.
Or number three that I, because I talked about them in our... Oh, because Mike, you know, I'm not good with last names, but Mike, the Veterans Affairs Director.
Zara.
Yeah, he's retiring, and that's, leaves a vacancy that they're trying to fill. So, any other questions?
That seems to be a little bit off what the other topics, I mean, that, that is...
Oh, you don't have your mic on, so we can't hear.
I said, that seems to be a little different from, from the other topics that you're dealing with, and I was just wondering how you, you identified that position, and, and you have and, and you have the service areas, Stoughton and Avon? And all, there's, there's a whole lot of stuff there that, that I don't think that, that we've really addressed.
I'll defer to Dr. Grimm on the specifics of the job description and the criteria for filling that position.
Yeah, we're, so Mr. Pizara had indicated back in early July that he was ending full-time employment at the end of July. The Commonwealth requires that we have a full-time veterans' agent, though they have relaxed that for many communities, because the number of veterans has declined. While we are doing a search, Mr. Pizara has agreed to stay on through August and possibly September in a part-time capacity, so that we're still servicing our veterans. In the meantime, the Avon thing is still a possibility in the works, and it's in there because it may be part of a job description. Avon has reached out because they may be in need of such services as well. And they're not really in a position to hire full-time, so they'd have to be some, they'd have to have some work with the Commonwealth. We may be looking to do some agreement with Avon where they pay a percentage of the salary. So, but when we write up the job description, at that point, we, if we are firmly working that direction with Avon, I want it to be as part of the job description. I will tell you, I've actually had interest for that position from a female veteran, who asked me about the status. And there's a, so it goes back to our question of...
I'm not, I'm not really interested in the, in, in the specifics of who you've interviewed or not.
But we haven't.
I guess I was more, I was more taken by, you know, you have a, a thing on history and, and other things that are much more general. And then all of a sudden, you focused on a singular position in the town. Why that one?
I, I think...
Why, why that one, as opposed to any other? Why did we, why did we jump from, from sort of a, a broad look to, to a specific position, which...
Sure. That's absolutely, we have been moving this direction with all positions. Deanna has been working to advertise in a, for a broader pool through different markets. And we did this for any position that's open right now, we have expanded our advertising. One of the opportunities with this is it is a managerial position. Quite often, the positions we have are frontline, not that those are not equally important, but again, we're looking at giving a broad range of opportunity to a broad range of people with various skills.
I, I think that that's very important. I guess they're not all on this list here.
No, exactly, we're already doing much of this.
That's really the question that I'm asking. It seems to me that you've gone from looking at a process, one way, to just focusing on a particular position in the town. And I was more than a little curious, which is why I asked the question. It seems to me to be, I don't know, it just, just kind of strange to me, that's all.
I can answer that question for you, Mr. Gito. It's natural, it's a natural thing for us, because we're using the tool, the racial equity tool that we have been using for the last six months, to look specifically at this position, how we draft a job description, how we advertise. And we can measure and tweak it, a process as we go along. So you, the human resource personnel are a part of the core remap team. So they are taking the lead on doing this, and to recruit, and looking at job descriptions, promoting the position, and working with a veteran who's also on the core remap team. So it's a litmus test, are we going in the right direction? Are we not?
So it's a, it's an example, or a...
Yes, it's an example.
Of what you're doing.
That's right.
Because it's going to be a model for other, other positions?
Yes.
Is that what, what you're focusing on? And I guess, I, I'm...
I, I think we're...
I believe in modeling.
Yeah, I mean, we have tried different ways to diversify our applicant pool. We have had some minimal success. We would like to have more success on getting a diverse pool. This position happens to be one that's open now, it happens to be a director-level position. It has one single stipulation that the person has to be a veteran. Outside of that, we have a very broad pool, and that actually opens the door for a whole lot of people, because our veterans cross all walks of life, all ranges of the world, and, you know, and, and again, a broad range of race, gender, and, and really, so many people serve the country, and some, you know, from, from so many backgrounds. So this is a particularly, I think, good one to look at. But yes, we have been making the efforts, we, in fact, are, we have a couple of new hires coming on now in, in various departments that, in fact, two, I think in the past two weeks, who are people of color.
I, I guess if I had seen a line that said what your purpose was, that was not just filling this one position, I might have had a different reaction to looking at that one position. If you see what I'm saying?
Yes, and nobody is excluded from applying. This doesn't mean that it is only a person of color who can apply.
No, no, I wasn't, I mean...
No, I'm just clarifying for any, yeah.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, if this was a demonstration project for, for hiring, future hiring, if that were, if that were a line item in the bullets over on the right-hand side, I would have found a context for that that would have been different than how I looked at it, because it just looked like it came out of the blue. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that concludes it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Roberts, you did put a lot of work into it, and it's very much appreciated. Okay, so then, we're gonna discuss, and this is a general subject, and where we are at 10 o'clock, we do need to hit the consent agenda, then we need to go into executive session on two issues. So I'm gonna ask the board if you would like to put this on the next agenda, or is it something we can address quickly? Because the way we've been, yeah, that's, I was gonna say quickly, but based on what we've done tonight, probably not, but...
I think we can address it quickly, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It's 9C, if you would like me to proceed.
Yes, ma'am, please proceed.
So, discussing your housing. So during our annual town meeting, May 3, 2021, Article 38, petition to establish Pleasant Street Senior Housing Zoning District. The two-thirds majority vote failed. That left open a question, where is the right place and location for senior housing? And we never really readdressed that. It, we were gonna discuss it, or I had planned to discuss it, when we talk about the master plan. But when I had a conversation with Dr. Grimm, she says, "Wait a minute, I have an update on that." So I said, "Let, it's, this is important that we share that with the other board members as well." Thank you.
And so very briefly, there have been a lot of discussions on where we are best off at putting senior housing, particularly affordable senior housing. Age-restricted housing helps us fill our 40B requirements and maintain our 40B requirements, and serves just what we were talking about earlier tonight, the growing senior population, that disproportionate increase in people over 65. People who struggle, A, to maintain the taxes on a fixed income, and B, the logistics of even taking care of a house, who do not want to move out of town. So we have a lot of discussion on where this should go. And ideally, you want senior housing, particularly age-restricted, where people can get quickly to where they want to go. They don't have to have multiple motor vehicles, it may be one vehicle per household, if at all. Access to the train makes sense if somebody wants to go into Boston, as people get older. Even when we're younger, we may not necessarily want to drive into Boston, and the train is here. So, you know, I, I had an informal discussion with a developer, who said, "Part of the challenge is that when you build them, they're not necessarily selling, however, the way we think they would." So I think we really need to have a deep discussion with our developers, who are doing this regionally, to determine where they are seeing that these are working, and look for portions of our town where it may work. I will tell you one example that I particularly like, and I, I just haven't had the time to, to move forward. We have, there, there's one down in Rhode Island off Route 1 in South County. And it's the South County Commons, if you get a chance, look it up. It is a self-contained village, and it basically has age-restricted condos, and storefronts, and, at, at the time, a movie theater, because people still went to movies, and a jewelry store, and a clothing store, and a coffee shop, and a convenience store, a little mini-mart. Basically, a village community within a town, on a parcel of land. Now, that one happens to be a, a large acreage parcel of land. But I think what I'm seeing, if, if what the developers are telling me, that, that it's not happening in the downtown units for some reason, maybe we need to look and work with the developer about talking about a parcel of land, where we might be able to create that type of a village. It's a little out of the box, it's a little different than anything I think we've talked about. It's probably the first time, I think, I'm broaching it publicly, though I've, I've chatted with Mark Tisdale about this a little, and we were looking at the plans. And conceptually, I think if you make it a good access either to the train, or even to 24, where people might drive on, you know, an easy-access road, we have sewer lines going in now in places. I'd really like to take a hard look at where we have a large acreage. We had somebody call, and unfortunately, he missed the meeting a couple of weeks ago, we tried to schedule, I think there was some confusion with Zoom, who was interested in actually talking to us about the armory, and developing that for senior housing. And we have some logistical issues with the deed and, and the agreement on the use of it. Is it something the town wants to own and lease out? I don't know. I mean, I think that there's a lot for us to discuss, and I know we have a, we have, we've had a long night. But I just want to put out there that there are a host of different ways we can do this and look at this. I did get a request from the Affordable Housing Group, that I do send them a letter indicating that we do believe there is a need for senior housing. I am comfortable sending that letter, if the board is comfortable with me sending that letter. But where it happens, you know, when I've talked to the developers, I was really almost discouraged when they said that, you know, they're just not selling downtown. Maybe they rent downtown, I, I don't know. I think we need to get the developers in a room, and, and really have a hard conversation on where this is most appropriate. It just makes sense to me, you would want it here near the train, but if that's not where it's selling, then where does it sell? And does it work better if we have somebody develop a true village? And they're really kind of neat concepts when they work. So just food for thought.
Yeah, this, this might not be good advice, so I'll trust you if, if you decide not to, not to pursue it. But, but there's a, there's a type of investment vehicle called a REIT. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, it's a real estate investment trust. It's similar to a mutual fund, but instead of buying, buying securities, you, the mutual, this mutual group, this pastor entity buys real estate. And so like Avalon Bay is a very popular one, there's others. And so the, the properties are owned by this pool of investors. They, they have access to very large pools of, of, of cash, and they're often developing all over the place. And I, I've noticed that, recently, when I was looking into this, this subject, I just looked up senior housing REITs, R-E-I-T, and I was able to find a number of them. Some of, some of them operating in neighboring communities, like Weymouth, for example. So, so getting in touch with those folks, it may be a way to go. It will definitely offer, you know, different, just a different group of, of people. And, you know, if we're able to court and sort of hold their hand through some of the processing, that might, might go a long way as well. But the, yeah, they have just a outrageous amount of, of capital spend usually each year, and, and, and they're often looking at the bottom line, they're, they're pretty smart about this stuff, so it's worth looking at.
Thank you, absolutely.
The key, key to those things are, if, if you don't get it locked in, in perpetuity, the second they can't make a buck at it, goes out in a different direction. And it's already happened in this town. We had an over 55, wasn't moving, they retracted the 55, and everybody goes, "Oh, it never happens." And I'm like, just like when I had to listen to the real estate guy say, "It doesn't happen." I've seen it happen, I've worked on them where they've flipped, and it's, it's, it's not fair to the town. People think they're getting senior housing. And sometimes they get something they don't want. So if you're gonna do it, you gotta lock it in perpetuity, and then it can't get out. But that's why sometimes when you partner with a developer, he's in it for, to win it. You got Stoughton Housing Authority, used to have a guy that was gonna buy the Swan's Tavern, and they were gonna do an elderly thing up there, and something happened, and that died. It's too bad, it was a good location. Sometimes you can't look for the home run ball, you gotta look for something that fits. And some of these people want to be away from the square, they want a little tree around them, but they still want to be able to get the shaws. So it's, in, in the projects you're talking about, most of those are vetted on, like, county projects that are done in Missouri and places like that, where the tracts of land are so vast, they got a Walmart at one end, they got Dunkin' Donuts over here in the middle. Nobody can get 80 miles to the other place.
The local ones are definitely much smaller, they're much more, they're truly villages, they're not little cities inside a county. No, absolutely, the large, the large Midwestern ones are just not gonna work for us.
The piece of property that sits on 27 Canton Street, Joe, the Lipsky Field, that was gonna be a community center within it, with nail salons and all that. But the Wetlands is a big prod, problem there, so I think that's why they sit on that, but that's all I can say.
Just to follow up just quickly on, you know, and what we gotta stop doing is us deciding what we want, and bring somebody in that tells us what we need, based on facts. But even facts could go wrong. The one that we had go bad, Dr. Camacho was the one that got that rolling with Conroy Development. My mother lives in a complex called High Pond Estates in Bridgewater. Everybody said High Pond Estates was the greatest place in the world, that's where people are moving from Stoughton, which there are many people from Stoughton that live in High Pond Estates in Bridgewater. Mr. Conroy asked me if he could visit my mother's home, and to see how it was constructed and so forth, and that's what he built, in Stoughton. And it was the same process. The only thing is, for some reason, people weren't staying in Stoughton. So, you know, again, if we tell people what we want, I'll probably say this till the day I die, we grow trees. You know, we've got it, we've got to know that it's okay to bring people in and say, "This market is working in towns similar to you, with similar demographics and, you know, and per capita and so forth, as Stonem." So what we should be doing is going to a town like Stonem and saying, "Hey, what's working? How are you keeping your residents, you know, in town?" I can't believe, I'll, I'll point to Mr. Gito and go back on memory lane, when Mr. Gito said to me when I had first come on the board, young, cocky, you know, thought I knew it all. Realize now, Mr. Gito, you know, that I don't know that much. But Mr. Gito said, "It's okay for us to say what we want in Stoughton and what we don't want in Stoughton." And now I'm at that age where I'm saying that I can see this, is that we should be talking to people that are living in Stoughton and say, "What would you like to stay in Stoughton?" I mean, maybe they don't like a complex, maybe they want, as some, a Stoughton resident has mentioned to me, tiny houses. I, I particularly don't think I could live in a tiny house, but there are some people that are very comfortable in them, and it may be the place that keeps them in their town. The, the tavern was an awesome idea at the time, that was a travesty that it didn't happen, because it was gonna really serve a need. But look at just the turnover at Capen Street. There are, there are a lot of people that were Stoughton residents there, and after the fire, they didn't come back. You know, there, and I know several people, they just didn't come back. So unless they decided to stay with families, but we don't know, you know, why they didn't come back. So it, I've talked with developers, and of course, you have to hear Stoughton, and they roll their eyes. You know, that they say, "You can't develop in that town, because nobody lets you develop anything." You know, they tell you what they want, and it's not what's gonna work. I don't know, and I've mentioned, I'll mention it again, there was a, a thing on, I think it was Chronicle, a couple of months back, on how the city of Cambridge was bringing affordable housing for seniors. And again, it was set up almost as a 40B type of idea. My brother, my younger brother... My younger brother, before he passed, had a condo like that in the south end of Boston, and his condo was just about $600,000. It was rent subsidized, you had to make under a certain amount of money. The condo on the top floor was $7.9 million. So, you know, and that's what this complex was in Cambridge, where it had some senior housing, it had some upper apartments, and then condos on top. And then it was the same thing like we're proposing in some of our, you know, business now, is renting upstairs and, and a service, whether it's a drink shop or a cafe or a small sandwich shop, to service them. One building that I saw that was designed as a mixed use for seniors and condos actually had the elevator when it came down, it was, it ended up on the bottom floor like a little mall, a sandwich shop, a newspaper store, a place where you pick up milk or whatever, you never have to leave, you know. So that's why I think we've gotta get to a point, and I've said this before, is me personally, as a member of this board, I would say that I think we're underutilizing the talent of Corvo Development, who is in here building without the town, and his places are rented before they're even finished. So he's doing something right, and I think he's being totally underutilized. We did have a good run, and many people remember it, when, and everybody says, "Conroy Development made a lot of money," when they worked with the town of Stoughton to develop all the swampland, which is now Reebok Drive. Sure the heck they did. Conroy Development made a lot of money, but they earned it, you know, and that's all money that came back to the residents. That was tax dollars that came to the town, and yet they attracted Reebok when they came in. That's what they brought into the town of Stoughton. Stoughton didn't tell them to go get them, we didn't go all in to do the work, and we saw that benefit. And I think the more that we, we do that, and we do these big committees and public hearings to what residents want, well, we may want something that doesn't sell in the real estate market. We saw it with the 55 and older. We saw it at a recent town meeting article, that, you know, that by a right, you know, the residents have a different idea what they want on the property. So we've gotta find out what's good for us with listening to people that are better than us. This goes right back to what, you know, when I first mentioned staff who did come forward with the fire station, you know, and we have people that know this stuff, yet we still don't grab that opportunity. You know, I would love developers, I would love to see this room packed, and I will probably attempt to do this, I tried, but it didn't get going, is I'd like to see every property owner in downtown sitting in this room and ask, "What can we do to empower you to be able to add or to renovate and attract a different use to downtown?" And then listen to them. I mean, so, that's my two cents on that issue. And anybody else before we move on? Okay. All right, so the consent agenda, and there's nothing here that I don't think I have to read, and beyond item A is the payroll bill, warrants, and any other documents to come before the meeting, item B to approve invoice number 13 in the amount of $9,493 for disbursement to be made from the CPA housing account under the COVID-19 Emergency Housing Fund, and to approve the open session minutes of August 3, 2021. Is there anybody who would like to pull any of those items?
Item C.
I'm sorry?
Item C.
Mr. Gito was item C. Ms. Roberts?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kavy?
Nope.
And Mr. Gravert?
Nope.
Okay, on item C, Mr. Gito.
Yes, I noticed in the, I think I'm on here, in the discussion, it's in our packet here. That we, we went through all the items, and then we had documents used during the meeting. And we went through consent agenda, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Agenda E, and then Agenda F. Just a minute. There was an agenda item G. Oh, it was, we went from F to H. There was an agenda item G, which was the opening up discussion on the post office. And I had sent four pages of an attachment and a, an email that everyone on the board got. And all I'm suggesting is that that item G be included on the items used, and the memo and the four pages of discussion be included in the minutes.
Well, I'll yield to the board on what they want to do with that, because that...
Well, it wouldn't have been on the agenda.
The documents were irrelevant because the board chose to not discuss them.
It wouldn't have been on the agenda, had I not...
No, it was on the agenda, as I told you, it was on the agenda for the board to vote if they wanted to even discuss it.
So I understand that. I understand that. It would not have been on the agenda of the April 3 meeting if it were not submitted to the board to be included in a discussion. That's how it got there, even though it was a consent agenda item as moving forward. But the fact of the matter was that that should be a public record, and it should be included in the discussion, in, in the items that got the item to the minutes. And I'm asking that that happened.
You're saying that it was not in the minutes that we even discussed it? Is that what you're saying?
It was not one of the, it was not, yes, it was not...
I guess I've gotta read all the minutes.
The consent agenda.
I see the consent agenda item, so I've gotta read the minutes of this, of this one, too. Well, it's a public document, the minute you sent it to everybody, so it's, it can be seen by anyone. It's a public document. There's nothing, the minute you sent it to the board, anything that we do, anything on these computers...
It should be, it should be in this document.
Okay, well, I don't think, I disagree with that, that those documents belong in there because they were not discussed in the meeting, therefore, they wouldn't be included in the minutes. So I would, I would yield, that's my opinion on the board. We did not discuss those documents, so therefore, they would not be in the minutes of the meeting. It was only the conversation that took place relative to the re-engagement of the conversation. Okay, so you're asking for something that we didn't discuss to be in the minutes. That's not an accounting of the minutes.
The topic was sent to the board.
I know it's sent to the board, but the documents were not discussed by the board. Therefore, they don't belong in the minutes of the meeting, because they did not get discussed in the minutes of the meeting. You don't just throw something into the minutes of the meeting. It did not take place in the minutes, in the meeting. They were not discussed in the meeting, it was a subject, whether we even wanted to talk about them. We did not discuss those documents you sent in that meeting whatsoever. Therefore, they don't belong in the minutes of the meeting. So I'll yield to the board, but I don't believe that that's an appropriate accounting of the minutes.
Let's hear.
I, I'd like to perhaps weigh in on this. I can, as part of me can definitely see both sides of the argument, I do agree that it did not come up in the meeting, but however, I think it did set a context for it. If you see, for example, the list of documents used during the meeting, just as an example, number five, consent agenda item E, request by council on aging to set up a donation account through COE, sorry, COA, in the name of Gladys Berkowitz Sockdonation. We didn't read that letter, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't discuss that letter, and we nevertheless voted on that item. And I think that it was a matter of sort of the context of it. If I was going to only really, you know, with the motivation solely to, in this case, let's say my motivation was solely to protect the board against meeting law violations, I would err on the side of including it rather than not including it, to make sure that we weren't opening ourselves up to any problems. We're not actually, and I don't think we include the documents, we would be just adding the, the list of that document to the, to the minutes, correct?
I understand what you're saying, but it's not, when you submit documents as part of the official record, the minutes of the meeting of the select board, there are gonna be people that say, "You talked about it, here they are right in your minutes." We didn't discuss them, so they don't belong in the minutes of the meeting. Now, again, I mean, I, I think if the board wants to be safe, it would say that this was presented to the board but not ever discussed in the meeting, okay? Because again, the minutes of the meeting are the minutes of the meeting. What we discussed in that meeting, we did not discuss those documents. If it was a vote relative to something that was, had to take action, and it was a staff document that needed to be acted on, then you would say that these documents were submitted like we did on the poll petitions tonight. Those were presented as items that we discussed, which resulted in a vote of the board. Those are required to be in the minutes of the meeting. These are not required to be in the minutes of the meeting because we did not discuss them. They're an attachment that Mr. Gito sent in a separate email that was not, you know, discussed. That's why it was on the consent agenda, and as I mentioned, you know, it was there to see if the board wanted to discuss it, because at the time, we won't get into it, but that's what was on, so they don't belong in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
If somebody wants to challenge it and take that to the Secretary of State's office, and I'm wrong, you know, or the AG's office, and I'm wrong, I'll apologize for being wrong, but I've never, ever seen this. Somebody else could give us something to say, "I want this in the minutes of the meeting," because you talked about the subject, but we didn't talk about that document. I mean, so what, what do we limit? How much gets thrown in to grow an argument that never existed?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Why did that not appear as, why is, of all the items that were in the consent agenda, why was the request that I made not included?
It was.
No, it was not. The, the material that I submitted was not included.
Because it wasn't taken up for discussion by a vote of three to two?
No, no.
No, Mr. Gito, the fact is, Mr. Gito, that I told you that the majority, the board had voted four to one to end the conversation, and I would put the question on the consent agenda to see if the board wanted to discuss this, because as I told you, I did not want to discuss it, and I would leave it up to the board to decide if they wanted to discuss it. Okay? The board has a right to say, "We don't want to discuss something."
I understand.
So let me finish. So I told you that that's where we would put it on the agenda. If the board voted that they want to support your motion to re-engage conversation, at that time, we would have put it on the agenda with a suitable amount of time to discuss all the documentation you provided. The board voted three to two not to do that. Therefore, your attachments are not relevant to the meeting minutes, because they were not discussed in the meeting.
If I might, is there, is there some confusion? I almost wonder if I'm hearing two different arguments. Under seven consent agenda, item G was pulled out. There are minutes on the fact that it was pulled out and discussed not to discuss, if that makes sense. Are you missing that somewhere on your online, did you see that document?
I saw the document that talked about the discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
What I was talking about was the basis for that discussion. Every other item in that consent agenda had material associated with it. Every other item had material associated with it. That particular item had no material associated with it. But there was material that was presented.
And everybody kept that.
And everyone got that.
That's right.
So we can have an item on the agenda that has no material associated with it that we are going to talk about? Or is it unique that the item had no material associated with it? It seems to me that it's unique, and I'm wondering why that is true, and I'm wondering why it is not there, and how did it not get included?
I think I answered your question. You're not satisfied with it, is...
I guess I'm not.
No. The board didn't vote, did not vote to take up the conversation. Therefore, the attachments you submitted were not discussed, they do not belong as a part of the agenda.
That was, that was the basis for the item being on there, and the material that I submitted...
Right, well, I think, again, the way it was done, it was put on the consent agenda...
I hear you.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure everybody's clear. It was put on the consent agenda to see if the board wanted to discuss this again. The board chose no. Therefore, the documents were not discussed, and if they had said, "Yes, we would like to discuss this more," and that's the way, as a matter of fact, Mr. Kavy seconded the motion, so he said that he would like to have Mr. Gito be able to talk about it. The vote failed three to two.
I understand, Mr. McCrisky, I understand what you're saying to me. There are two levels. The first level is that the material was there in order for you to decide whether or not you wanted to deal with it further, and that was true for all of the items in the consent agenda, all of the items in the consent agenda, except for that. And in the, this is now my fourth meeting, all of the items that are in the consent agenda have a corresponding background information, except for that one item.
Right, but these are things, the consent agenda, that had the documents tonight that were voted, whether it was making a payment or approving something else, this was whether the board wanted to talk about it. These consent agenda items, as you know from your past years on the board, are things that are usually normal in nature, very quick, don't involve a lot of conversation.
But some of them do.
In some cases, we do not talk about them, period.
Some of them do.
Okay? Many of them do, okay? So this is not any different than the issue of yours, is that we weren't, we were gonna vote to have it on another agenda when those documents would have been provided as a separate agenda item, and then they would have been a part of the meeting minutes then, irregardless of which way the vote went. Okay? But the board voted that they didn't want to discuss them, therefore, there's nothing to be put into the agenda because they didn't, into the minutes because it was not discussed. It's, it's, it's a normal protocol on, if the issue was handled that way, that's the way it was. You had the opportunity, and normally, we wouldn't even talk, you had the opportunity to tell your colleagues why you wanted to talk about this, and your colleagues didn't support you by a three to two vote.
All I'm saying is, never mind. I have said what I've... I have said what I've said. I guess that what I would ask my colleagues to think about, seeing this is not going to go anywhere, if items that they would like to see on the agenda get put in the consent agenda without any background information that goes along with that item when it has been submitted, how they would feel about that? That's the end of, that's the end of my discussion.
Okay, and I'll ask my colleagues to do the same thing, that when you voted to, to end a project that had taken years to discuss, we got nowhere, the problem with that was the people didn't want to negotiate with us, but we were wasting money of town resources and personnel, and then somebody wants to re-engage that, what was new other than you wanted it and the board had already voted down? So it's just one of those things that, you know, we, you know, we don't always get what we want on this board. I've had many of those meetings as well, and I've had many times I've been upset, but the board outvoted me, and that was the way it is.
I, I understand being outvoted. That's not the issue. You will understand that sometime.
I understand it, I don't think you do. So with that, I think we could go back and forth all night. If, if there's anything that shows that I was wrong, I don't believe I was wrong, I would publicly apologize to you if it was wrong. It was handled, you may not like the way it was handled, but, you know, the board all had the opportunity to support that to be discussed at another agenda. Those items that you presented would have been put here, and then if the vote went up or down, they would be items attached to the conversation, and they would be a part of the mini, the meeting minutes because they were discussed in the open meeting. This was not. Okay, so if anybody have anything else on the agenda items? We talked about that one, make sure I'm looking at the right thing here, so...
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion to be made, is, anybody else have any questions on the consent agenda? Yes, Deborah, you had something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there was an amendment to the meetings, and so I wanted that to be approved as amended.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with item C amended to include the changes provided by Deborah Roberts via email.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, hearing any conversations on, Mr. Gito?
Yes, on A and B.
Okay, Ms. Roberts?
What am I voting on? Okay, so I have no questions, and I vote in favor of moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
And the chair votes in favor.
Okay, so it was unanimous with Mr. Gito voting no on C. Okay, so with that, we'll move us into our executive session. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the approval of executive session minutes of August 3, 2021, and national opioid litigations and votes may be taken. So I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion, Mr. Gito?
I didn't have anything in my packet about litigation.
What's that?
There wouldn't, there was nothing in your packet. I just have an update.
But that's, I printed this out today, and it has it on there.
But there's no, there's no material.
Oh, no material, okay, all right. No, no, that I knew because it's not in here, in our packets, but the items are here. I guess just discussion? But then again, if we are executive session minutes, where are they?
They were sent via email, and I can show you in the back if they're sent.
Oh, okay, so I didn't even download them. So do we want to, do we want to put that off until everyone's had the opportunity to read them?
No, I'll show you.
Is it just one page?
It's just one page, let me show you what it...
Okay.
And then I'll show you of Mr. Gito. Executive session, August 3, right?
Oh, yeah, that's a simple one.
Yes, simple. No, that came, she emailed it.
No, not yet. No, we will very shortly.
That's what we're going to approve when we go to the executive session.
Okay, so again, on the motion to enter executive session, Mr. Carrera? Yes, Mr. Carr, Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Okay, we will adjourn from executive session, we will not be returning to open session. Good night, everybody.